Goodbye.
Brandon?
Welcome to Zoom. Enter your... You are the first participant. Please stand by. This meeting is being recorded.
Are we ready to go? Are we live, Aaron?
John, are you good? We are good, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Welcome, everyone, to our council meeting. We have a little bit of a crowd today. That's good. That's a positive. I appreciate that. We will start, and invocation will be done by Kathy Harding. If you'll just come up and if... Make sure the light is glowing.
It is. Can you hear me?
Yep.
My Father in Heaven, we're so grateful for this opportunity we have to meet in our city council. We ask that thy Spirit reside with us and help us to make those decisions that are most important, to help our community to grow and to be happy and to make sure that we do those things that will be most beneficial to our community. And we're so grateful for all the blessings that we have and for this opportunity to be here together tonight. We say these things in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. And Andy, our new city engineer, is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Will the audience please rise? And repeat the pledge after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So we're going to allow our normal unscheduled public appearance time. I'm going to invite one of our council members, Tim Ball, to get in... First in line for public comment, and then we'll take others.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a comment regarding the fire, police, and the emergency services of the City of Highland. I never thought I would be in need of their services. But I take care of my elderly father, who's 95. And we had something happen at 2:00 in the morning. And we called the on-call nurse, and she said, "Call emergency services." So we did. I know it's mathematically impossible to give a rating higher than 10. You can't do it, but I'm going to do it anyway. So they deserve an 11-plus. They were courteous. They were fast. They treated him like he was a prince, and I'm truly grateful and wanted to thank you for the great services that you offer. So thank you.
Okay. That's a good attaboy. Anyone else want to address the council? You get your three minutes of fame on live YouTube. Yes. So state your name, and then just let us know what you're thinking.
Okay. Well, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Brandon Nish. And first of all, thank you for your service to our city. It's very much appreciated. I wanted to just speak quickly about the disposition of open space that the city is contemplating. And I was very excited to hear that that's an opportunity. And wanted to just share some of my personal thoughts on that, to the extent that it might help refine opinions on it. I used to live in the Viewpoint neighborhood, and we had a 35-foot space between our backyard and the backyard of our neighbors. And it was open space, and it was grass. And the city maintained it. But that... Because of the nature of that particular piece of space, it wasn't actually used by anyone. It was just there. And we had to have a fence, and so it was actually behind our fence. So we didn't even get to use it. So it was kind of a waste in terms of space that could be used by the citizens in some meaningful way. The other issue was that, for whatever reason, like the sprinklers weren't set up very well, and it was just the grass was pretty much dead in the heat of the summer, and a lot of weeds started kind of coming through. And so my yard looked nice, but just on the other side of the fence, the city land did not look nice at the time. I've since moved, and now I have another situation where I've got a piece of land that kind of juts in between my backyard and the backyard of my neighbor that is similar in that it just... Nobody ever goes there. It's not providing benefit to the community. And for us to be able to acquire that... And in some cases, and in our case, we actually want to leave it natural. But in some cases, getting rid of some weeds that are just kind of ruining other people's yards would also be a potential opportunity that would make sense. And so for me, I just wanted to express that I think it's a great thing for the city to do this. I think each case has to be looked at on a case-by-case basis, regardless of the designation of the land, why it was, what it was. It... All it... Doesn't really matter at this point. It's just what is the situation with this particular parcel? And would it make sense for that to be acquired by the citizens that live nearby? And is that a better opportunity for them and for that land? And so I think I covered my main thought. I would just offer also that obviously neighbors should be given input and consent. If there's a proposal brought forward, then obviously the neighbors have to be involved in that and give their... Give their whatever approval. And then finally, the pricing of the land. If it's too expensive, nobody's going to do it. And so what was the point? So obviously, the pricing has to be reasonable. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon. Anyone else would like to... Sure. Come on up. State your name, and then show your thoughts.
My name is Brady Giles. I've emailed you. Thank you so much for responding and being interested in what we're interested in. And thank you for your time and service to the city. I'm standing up because Brandon and I did not coordinate any thoughts, but I want to second exactly what Brandon said. I think I've tried to explain that in emails that I've sent to you and a few weeks ago when I attended the meeting here and visited with you. So that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Ditto's are good. Thank you. That's even better. All right. Any other comments? Anybody online? 99.9% sure no.
Sorry, Mayor. Scott, I'm going to go ahead and unmute you if you would like to make a comment. Thanks, Scott. Nobody else online, Mayor?
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. We're moving on to presentations. We have Neil here from... I won't do your last name because I might get it wrong. But Neil, I'll try anyway. Schwendeman is here to tell us about North Point Solid Waste.
Yeah. So I'm Neil Schwendeman. I'm the district manager for North Point Solid Waste. I replaced Roger Harper, who retired in December. I'm excited to be here in Utah County. I was actually formerly with Washington County Solid Waste in southern Utah. This is the time of year where you want to move from there up to here. But winter is when you want to go down there, right? But anyway, I'm here to talk some trash with you. And we've been having some discussions about some software that can help all of the cities within the district, help the residents know when their schedules are, what waste can go where and whatnot. And I just wanted to show some of that with you there. Let me see if I can get it on the screen here. Okay. Here we go. So right now, I'm on... I'm going to show you a couple different softwares. It's all online. Can you see it on the screen here?
No. It disappeared. It was, and then it went away.
Hopefully, it'll pop up there.
That's okay. We can crane our...
Want to turn around and bend your necks? I'll try not to take too much time on it. So the two different softwares. One is called Recollect. This is what Washington County uses. And the other one is called Recycle Coach, which the City of Orem uses. Basically, what it is is a... This one is an embedded widget on your webpage, which is this orange box right here. And it has a couple different things. One, you can click on My Schedule. You can click on What Goes Where, and then if you need help with it. So I'm just going to show you the My Schedule real quick. Type in an address here. And pull up one that I know. So if I click on search, it's running a little bit different than I'm used to. So here, it's just asking you, hey, do you want a reminder? So it's going to pull up a calendar. I'm not going to create a reminder right now. But as you can see, this box, which... Great. Of course, when I'm here, it's not going to work. What it'll do is it pulls up a calendar, and it shows you which days your garbage and recycling days are on. So in Washington County, the recycling is every other week. My days were always on Monday, but I couldn't have remembered. Did I put out my recycling last week or not? So it was always handy to have a text reminder to say, hey, I got it on Sunday night. Put out your garbage can and your recycling can tonight, and it'll be picked up tomorrow. Refresh that and see if it'll pop up the calendar.
I don't know. I noticed that I got a reminder phone call or text from our waste services that said, hey, Monday's a holiday, so everything will be off one day. You're not... And this is Waste Management, so it's not tied to Waste Management.
It's not tied to Waste Management, no. In Washington County, for the entire county, it was all picked up by Republic Services. You can see that it did pull up the calendar finally. You can click up here to get a reminder. You can get an email reminder, a text reminder, a phone call reminder. You can even get a Twitter reminder. I think in Washington County, there was only one signed up, and that was me because I was trying it out. You can also print out the calendar if you want, and then you can search for another address. If I go back one month... Well, Mondays weren't a... Well, it should have been. Waste right here should have been moved to the fir... Oh, actually, Washington County isn't closed on Memorial Day, not like Utah County. So there... On the calendar, you would have seen the waste picked up on the following day. You can also schedule other events, like our household hazardous waste events and stuff like that. You can put on the calendar and do that. The other feature is What Goes Where. Let's just say you had a bunch of Styrofoam. You just click on, like, that one's a Styrofoam egg carton, and it says, hey, this isn't recyclable. Put it in your waste. Type in another item. I'll just do plastic. I'll do plastic bottles there. And so it shows you different options. You can put it in the blue recycling can. Tells you to have it out by a certain time. Or there was also some public drop-off recycling places throughout the county that you could put the waste material in. So it lists every option that a resident would have to put the material in. Those are the basic features of both apps. The City of Orem's app looks like this right here. So here, they have that same feature of What Goes Where. I'll just type in battery and see what pops up there. And it can come up, Household Batteries. Click on it. And it says, hey, that's household hazardous waste. And then it has a description of what to do with it. If I go back, they also have... I went back too far. Down below that, you can view this... View a schedule and set reminders. The same type of things. I know Highland City, there's, what, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday are the three different days. For cities that have the different days of collection, it's kind of nice because then residents can... You can give this information out to the residents. They can easily find out when their garbage day is. If they moved within the city, they could go back on, put in a new address, and find that information out. And then if they ever had questions about what can they recycle? What should they throw away? What's considered hazardous waste material? It's all stuff that can put in there. The district has looked at, okay, if we... If the district went in and kind of was the lead on this, and we got all the cities in the district to jump on board, what would that price look like? And overall, it was about 15 grand for the entire year. I broke that down into, based on population, what would each city have to pay to cover that 15 grand? And it ended up being like about $500 for the City of Highland if... Because of the percentage of population. That's if we went that route. And that was without the district putting in any money to assist with that as well. So the purpose of all this is to, one, show you the programs, the features it has, and then for you guys to converse, I guess, and kind of decide if it's something that you would like to see done. And let Councilman Smith know, and then he can report back to our board as to, you know... If there's enough consent among all the cities in the district, then we'll pursue it. If not, I have the contact information for both companies. And if the city wanted to go out on their own and do something like that as well, then they can do that. I know on the website, the Highland website, you can pull up a map, and you can see the different zones. And then you can pull up a PDF of different types of materials, what can go where. This is a lot more interactive and whatnot. And I found it very useful when I was using it in Washington County. So have any questions?
I'd like to make a comment. So I'm on the board for North Point, and I have to ask my wife all the time what we should put in the recycling. So I think it would be a nice little thing to be able to go look because I always have trouble with, like, Styrofoam or this plastic bottle or that plastic bottle and different things. And I know the information's out there if we seek it, but it'd be nice to have something that's easy. And so I kind of like the idea personally, especially since it's not going to be that expensive. And I think there was some discussion that the whole district would go on part of that or paper part of it. Is that right?
Correct. We just haven't decided on what the amount would be. One thing with Washington County, with all of the cities being under the same contract for the collector and everything, I manage that whole thing. I could get into the backend of it. I could see all the statistics of how many people were signing up. I could do all of that. In this situation where we have three different haulers, we have Republic and Waste and Ace Disposal, each city would have to kind of designate someone to be that backend person. Well, at least with Recollect, Recycle Coach, well, both of them, you can always push out the information to them, and they would update it. But I found it nice to be able to have access to it and be able to just go on and do it when I needed it done. It was very user-friendly and whatnot. So that is one aspect that would be a little bit different here is each city would have to do that. We'd have to get a list of all the addresses to put into the database upfront. It's really the setup in the beginning that takes the longest and the most amount of time. So...
Okay.
All right.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you. I thought that was informative. I would like to get a reminder on the recycle day because I'd get it wrong half the time.
My daughter was just asking if it's recycled today because she runs a business taking in people's trash and putting them out. So she's like, is it recycled? I'd love a reminder.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Next up is Jeff Murdock. And I assume Travis is your backup. We'll call it hero support. Is that what we'll call it?
Mayor and council, I'm happy to be here tonight to present this update to you guys about our pressurized irrigation system. As you guys may know, it's a very dry year. We've... We had a really mild winter. And we also... The mayors got together, and we postponed our irrigation season till the 1st of May this year, which was helpful. And I think we'll see some savings out of that as far as water usage goes and storage. But this presentation is brief. It just is going to give you some updates on where we're at and what we're looking forward to this year. So this first graph... Can you guys see it on this? Is it working now?
Yep.
It's showing where we're at, and you can all see where we're at. We're actually in the exceptional drought section, right on the border of exceptional drought and extreme drought. So we're about as bad as it gets right now, as far as the water goes. If you can look outside, the mountains are looking pretty bare already. It's already looking like it's the end of June, 1st of July-type season. So it's not looking super good right now. But our next slide is... Keep pushing different buttons here.
You can push... Yeah, there you go.
There we go. This one is actually a flow chart of... There's a testing station up the canyon at the old power plant, a little ways up the canyon before you get to the Tempanoas Cave National Park. And this flow meter is a continuous thing. It reads a lot of... I mean, every half hour, I get an update on what the flow is. But as you can see, this is the last six years of flow data that it's given us from 2015 to the current time. And you can see there's been some good years, and there's been some bad years. And we're currently in the worst of all of them. Where the peak that we've seen so far this year is 50 CFS.
And we're at... After this, it goes downhill, right?
Yeah. We're pretty much at the peak right now. We're not experiencing any high runoff. What we are seeing right now is pretty minimal. It's hitting 50 right now. We've seen years where it's been upwards of 300-plus CFS coming down the canyon. In those situations, we're in a flood watch, which is a different type of animal. But this year... Last year was a pretty dry year. We hit 150 CFS at that check station. And we were a little bit concerned because we didn't get a real high water that year. But we're a third of that this year. So there are some concerns as far as that goes. This next graph is just the month of May. It's showing the median is that upper, the triangular line that you can see up there. That's the median for this time of year, where we're generally at. And that's... This is an 88-year gathering of statistics that's showing that median. So we can... You can visually see we're well below that this year. This next graph is a list of our sources and how we've used those sources in the past. Depending on what water runoff we get, depends on how much storage water we need to use or what wells we need to use. And as you can see, last year was a year that we used a lot of our stored water out of Deer Creek and Jordanale Reservoirs. The canyon flow, it was okay. It picked up late in the year, and it was okay in the spring. The summer was a little mild. But the... As you can see, the American Fork River, it had quite a bit better flows than we're experiencing now, and it was still fairly low as far as the years prior to that.
Jeff, I had this up here just because you're talking about river versus... So we have our top as a well, so that's going to be coming out of the wells that we dug. Then you have total AF Lehigh irrigation. Is that coming out of the mouth of the canyon? Is that the one? Okay. So that's mouth of the canyon. Then we have CUP Deer Creek. I assume we take that out of the Murdoch Canal or other diversion points in the city.
Correct.
And then total AF. Where's that coming from?
That's the total acre feet.
From all sources?
All sources combined. So yeah, that's just a total of the sum of the water that we used that year.
So we actually used quite a bit more water than the previous year.
Yeah.
And the previous year, we had sent out frequent messages about use... Please use less. Please use, you know... Get smart meters, whatever, and maybe not so much last year.
Yeah. We did hand some out last year, and that's part of what I'll get to here. And it has been effective. We've seen the repercussions of that. People do notice, and they pay attention, and they try to cut back on their water.
Have you ever done a forecast for 2021, what it looks like our diversion will be coming from? I mean, you know, what... And I understand it's just a guess. But I mean, has there... Is there... With this being 30% of only what, you know, we are the other years, I mean, I assume our total AF irrigation will be down, you know, AF Lehigh. And will we be okay with the CUP and the wells augmenting this year? Or is that the concern that all of it's down?
That's part of the concern. As you can see on the bottom, we noted down, and we anticipate 3,000 acre feet for AF Lehigh irrigation in 2021. That's just a guess. As far as the trend that we're following right now, that's probably what the flow will see by the end of the year. That's the total. So yes, we do need to make up that difference. From the previous year was over 5,000 acre feet. So there's a couple thousand acre feet that we need to make up that difference, which can be from storage, wells, sources like that.
Or we could just use less.
Or use less. And that's genius. That's a good idea. So that's where we're kind of heading. So the next one is our storage and allocation. This is kind of our... I referred to it earlier today as our bank. This is what we have each year. Those are the water shares that we hold. There's different sources. There's Provo Full, there's Provo Lake. We have Highland Conservation, Central Utah Project Water. Those are our stored sources that we can bring in from Jordanale Deer Creek via the Provo River and through the pipelines across the valley. So that's our total.
If we don't use those, then they stay there, and we can use them in a future year, right?
Yes. We can carry over water for a certain amount of years, depending if the reservoirs fill and spill or not. And then there's a whole nother equation that goes into that if it starts spilling. We don't lose it all, but there is... It does start to diminish after that. So that's what we're allocated this year on paper is the 4,000... It's actually 374. I was a little off on the math there. But in talking to some of the Provo River water users, members, that's probably maybe going to be 80% of that. They're hopeful that it's going to be 80%. If things go really good and runoff continues to run off, it may even reach 90. But we kind of shot for 75 in this chart, not knowing that number until about 10 minutes before the meeting, I found out that number. So it's a little bit better than we had actually anticipated, but not a whole lot. So our 2021 goal is to not use any of that holdover water. So that holdover water is kind of our savings account. It's that account that you hold on to. And when things get really bad, you dip into it, just like owning a home or something. You try to keep that savings account as lush as you can. But it is there in times of need. And this year, we actually have 868 acre feet of holdover water, which we did use some of that last year. So it's not quite as large a number. But several of the cities around us have zero holdover water. Last year, they pretty well used all their allotment. Last year, they pretty well used all their allotment. So we do have that sitting in our, in our pocket. In 2018, that was kind of the last real drought year that we experienced. Last year wasn't as bad, or two years ago. We used 4,326 acre feet that year. So you can see we're, we're right there with what our allotment is on, on that storage water. The next slide is the application rates for irrigation water. So this study was put together by the state of Utah Water Users. And it was data collected from cities that are metering and monitoring their water and charging per, per connection on their water usage. You can see it starts at Saratoga Springs at the top. They had probably the least usage up there. And then it goes down to Hurricane, which is in southern Utah, a lot hotter, hotter climate than we are. They don't really experience winter. So water usage is kind of expected to be a little higher there. With some of the meters that we installed several years ago, many of you were here when we installed those. They were kind of a test meter that we put in throughout the town and all different areas. With that data that we had compiled, our application rate's actually 6.2. So if you can see that compared to all of the rest, we're, we're very high. So we, we acknowledge that we are overusing water. We use a lot of water here in Highland City. And I think we can see a decrease in that with, with some conservation. So our conservation strategy that we've kind of put together is to conserve so we can save some of that holdover water for next year, especially if we don't have a good winter this year, we may, we may really need it next year. We're thinking a 25% reduction overall is not out of the ballpark. I think we can reach that very easily. And some of the, some of the studies that have been done, even with a 25% reduction with our application rate that we currently have, there's still going to be lush green lawns out there. We're not going to be burning up lawns. We're going to have nice flowers. The trees are going to stay alive. And it's, we're still going to have nice yards around Highland City with that.
Well, we can just say brown is the new green, right?
Yeah, there you go. Yeah, a few brown spots don't hurt anybody, but yeah, they're, they're an eyesore of certain people. But that's one of our points here is to handwater the brown spots. A lot of, a lot of people have noticed if they see brown spots, they kick their clock on and they run through their whole cycle again, which isn't necessary. Sometimes it does take a little time to take the hose out and go water it, but it's really helpful to our system and to our water storage if people can take that effort and do that. So we've asked, just to put it into perspective, instead of, say you have your sprinkler clock set and it's in a 30-minute cycle. We, all of that 25% is reducing that from 25, or 30 minutes down to 22 and a half minutes. And it's not a big, big change. It's not a big deal. And you probably won't notice the difference in, in yards. So that's something we're going to kind of push out to the public to try to do that, try to reduce that usage. In years past, we've handed out flyers, as Mayor was mentioning before. We did some last year for some pressure issues that we were having. And we noticed we had a 15% reduction in those areas pretty quick. So that's, it's not, it's very attainable. So some of our strategies are mailing out postcards every couple of weeks, trying to encourage people to reduce watering, possibly getting some of those smart controllers that do it for you if needed. City newsletters, social media flyers, and Slow the Flow website online is a great resource also to help with, with your watering. So that's, that's what I have. This is a beautiful place. I enjoy working here. And I hope that we can make it through this year and things will work out for us. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, so Jeff, I know that it's always been encouraged to not water. I think it's from about 8:00 AM to, you know, maybe 8:00 PM. Is there a certain savings that happens if we don't water during the day? I mean, I know driving a little bit through the city today, I was surprised how many systems were kicked on 11:00 AM today. Is, has there been any studies on what type of savings would happen if we only water in the evening when it's not hot?
It's always been the myth that you don't water during the day because of evaporation, which is true depending on your sprinkler system and your type of heads that you use. The real misting spray, sprayheads, yeah, that does evaporate. A lot of that water doesn't get to the ground because it's such a fine mist and it evaporates. Some of the bigger heads, they will douse enough that it's going to be effective still. So it's, it's a point that can be argued both ways. Definitely in the cooler temperatures, it's more applicable to water during cooler temperatures and nighttime hours and not in windy conditions.
So Jeff, I appreciate all the work you've done on this. Just a couple little comments. You know, we just spent a lot of our culinary water reserves to redo two of our culinary water wells. And I'm kind of of the opinion that we shouldn't encourage people to use culinary water to water the brown spots. And I know everybody does that.
Right.
But I'm not sure culinary water supply is really that secure that we can encourage people to do that. So I would kind of, I disagree a little bit with handwater the brown spots. But. Some of us have, like, I have spigots on the P I system.
Okay, so if you're using the P I system, but.
That's what was intended.
Okay, that's what you meant. Okay, okay, good.
A lot of filters and things have a spigot on them or they have a spigot in their flower bed to hook a convenient hose up to. But yeah, we don't encourage off that watering off the house.
Yeah, because the people in my neighborhood use their culinary water to spot water. So, and I bet that's true of a lot of people. So I think we should clarify that.
Right, that's good.
The second thing is I have a friend that works for CUP and I'm not exactly sure what his position is, but I know he carries around an iPad and can redirect all the flow in the CUP. And I was asking him, he says, I said, how are we doing? He says, well, things are dry, but he says, the CUP's been planning for a year like this for years. And, and so his feeling is, is if people will conserve, we're going to be okay, unless we have two or three more years like this.
Right.
But he says, this year we'll be okay if people will just conserve some. He says, we're not in panic mode. So.
Yeah, and we're kind of just doing this to get ahead of the game because we are, we're in a good situation still. We have some holdover water. If we can see that reduction through conservation, we'll be even better, especially if next year's a year similar to this. Because we're on year two of, of that situation if we go three, four years. So hopefully we can stay ahead of the curve and get it under control.
I just want to say I appreciate all this also. And I think us as a city council, we should let staff know that we support the strategies that he's put up there for public awareness to mail postcards, to promote these conservation strategies. And just us as city council members, we can post on our social media as well about this. So I think these are great strategies and I just hope we can do them.
Appreciate that.
No, and I, I agree with what Kim's saying. There's a lot of inertia out there. American Fork is putting out that they're, they did this 25%, you know, reduce from your timers. The Lehais went, I think that, you know, we're supposed to water twice a day, I mean, twice a week. You know, so we're starting to see a lot in the media. So I think we can also take that inertia that the residents have been, they're hearing it from our governor, that hopefully we can get the cut back because we don't know what we're heading into in the years in the future. So.
Yeah. Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay, Representative Bremer.
All right. Thank you very much for having me and I apologize to the chiefs and they heard this a couple of weeks ago. And I was going to comment on how good Chief Williams' goatee is, but he's overshadowed by the magnificent mustache next to him. But, and you know, I, I said this before to Alpine when they were there, but they do such a good job. And Chief William is, he's the Chiefs of Police Association liaison with, with the legislature. And I'm sure there's a better title for that, but he does a great job representing the police up there. And it's been a very difficult year for our law enforcement. And, and I've seen personally what a great job he does. And what a great job he's done balancing some very, very difficult issues this year with sensitivity and with a fealty to the law. And so I really do appreciate that. And I've said that before, but I'll say it again because I think it's important that we say that and that you all hear what a great job he does. So in terms of the legislative update, I will try to be brief and then open it up to any questions. You know, in terms of budget, we, we did well on the budget this year. Even if you take out the portion that was, that we attribute to the stimulus funding, we would have been above the line for budget. We were the only state in the United States to increase education funding this year. The, in terms of the ARPA funds, we are still, that, that will take a little while to work through the ARPA funds. And what we've done, because when you received your stimulus money, you were trying to keep track of spending it correctly as a city because the regulations were being written as they were giving out the money. That's still happening on, on the city portion for the ARPA funds and that's still happening on the state portion. So what we've done so far, in the first special session last month, we basically created buckets that were within areas that we knew could receive those funds. And we allocate to those funds and then we use grant programs to fund those items. So one of the larger things was water infrastructure. And so there will be a significant investment in water infrastructure statewide. And a lot of that is not just the large water conservation programs, but it's also the wastewater treatment programs that have been vastly underfunded in comparison to the water conservation programs. And in terms of water conservation programs, I'm talking more like Central, Central Utah Water Conservancy District and those larger, there's a few guerrillas out there that, that are like that. One thing to keep an eye on is my, I anticipate that, I know that you guys have been receiving emails and issues related to Blue Bison. I anticipate that if they continue to run up against city councils that are not cooperating with their developments, that they'll make an end run to the state. If you see anything like that, please let me know and keep an eye out for that. I'll be keeping an eye out as well. But that's a pretty common tactic for a larger developer that is struggling with cities. And so, and then in terms of other things, we're still working hard.
Question, Brady, back onto the ARPA money?
Yeah.
I, we have heard that they're setting up grant programs for water and whatever. Are those are intended for cities to apply to or the guerrillas?
Some will be for cities to apply to. But they're still, basically they created the buckets and then they said administrative bodies, as you get the regulations, we're empowering you to set up grant programs to the extent you can. And so I don't have the details exactly.
And it's still evolving, right?
Yeah, it's still evolving. We're still getting the regulations from the federal government on that, on that tranche of money. And so it's not money that we ask for. It's frankly damaging in many ways to our economy because of the, it's a delicate balance with inflation. The problem is it is money that we paid or that we will pay or that our children will pay. And so we might as well build our infrastructure with the money that they're giving back, even though it's not the decision we would have made had we been there. And so that's kind of the, the idea on that. And then we're still working hard on Utah Lake. We made a good run at doing some good things there. It was kind of one of those things where you knew you were going to run up against it and then hit your head hard and at least shake the building so that people know you're going to run up again the next legislative session. That has been accomplished. We're working with the, with a lot of the water groups as well as the local cities. And the point of the Utah Lake Authority bill that, that I'm working on is to provide, right now we don't have, and I spoke about this the last time I was here, we don't have an entity that can, that is authorized to act on behalf of the lake fully and has the resources to do so. And that's what we're trying to create. So with that, are there any, any major questions or follow-ups or just things that you saw in the legislative session that you really didn't like that you want to tell me about?
I have a couple of questions. First of all, I think water conservation, one of the things is we applied for a grant for meters. And that's something we're looking to apply for again, somehow help us out with making sure we have meters on all our water systems. And then second, so you did say something about Blue Bison coming to you at the state when, shall we say, they disagree with the city. Will you back up the city?
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure on that. And I also want to say, I follow certain bills in the, during the legislative session. And when I felt like, there are some bills that I was slightly passionate on, I would contact Brady. And he always followed up, really easy to contact if you've ever been on his website. He's amazing at transparency, information. He always has newsletters. So I just want to let everyone know to, to follow him on social media and go to his website as well. There's a lot of information there.
Thanks.
Brady, one question that was, I think when you were here in January was about the road fees and, you know, some of the usage fees. There was a bill that was going through. It appears that that has stalled or not moving through. Is there any update on that?
I talked with Cameron Deal, who represents the League of Cities and Towns. And he asked that I not run that bill and they wanted to continue on the path that they were going. You know, I'm not going to, I disagree with the path that the league is following on it, but I'm not going to force a solution that they don't want when it's really, I'm trying to help them. But if they don't perceive that as being helpful, then I wasn't going to force it with them. And so I didn't run that.
So that's just on hold for the time being.
That was just on hold. One thing that I would say, if there, if you do see legislative needs that need to be, you know, that need to be addressed at the state level, contacting me during the summer is much better than in the fall and as we get through the holiday season. Because the bill drafters, you know, you only have so many, you can only get a certain number of bills drafted because everyone has a certain number of bills that they can get drafted. And so there are bills late in the session. I try to reserve a priority that can put things to the front of the line to get something drafted. But there are bills in, that will never get drafted if I don't submit them early enough. And so particularly for city needs, earlier the better. And so if you have needs, you know, start thinking about them, get them to me as soon as you can so that I can help you out. And then, yeah, that was the other main thing that I need to make sure I cover with you because it's a, it's kind of, yeah. Our, our staff has probably left, oh, 200 to 300 bills per year undrafted the last two to three years and out of about 1,000, so you're talking about a third of the bills that are requested that never get drafted.
So now is the time is what you're saying.
Now is the time.
As you're bringing that up, I look back, the legislature, a lot of it was affordable housing. I know Highland, we've kind of tried to address that with accessory apartments. Is there anything new we need to be aware of that might be coming down the affordable housing side?
I haven't seen anything new, you know, that they've, that I've heard about. It's not always a, you know, it is not an organized system. Everyone has the ability to open bills, you know, and so it's not like there's a coordination on affordable housing. There are some groups that coordinate and then, you know, bring those in, but we usually don't hear about that until, you know, October, November period. However, I would not be surprised if there are additional attempts to address affordable housing. Some of those would be tied to, I, I know that they're for sure doing things related to licensing in hopes that they can address affordable housing by increasing the amount of labor that can work on homes and increase our labor short, you know, address our labor shortage. I'm not sure how much, you know, that's, we don't have a lot of unemployment. So it's not like that's going to fix as much as some would hope. But it could draw from out of state. We're getting so much out of state in migration into the state, particularly through COVID. It was, you know, we're still waiting for the numbers to come back, but it appears that we gained a lot of population through COVID. But aside from licensing, I, I don't know that there's something in particular that I've heard of. I mean, you kind of heard about the ADU issue, the accessory dwelling unit issue. And the one contribution that I was able to make on that was I contacted the bill sponsor early on. I said, you have to get parking dealt with in this because that will be, and if you don't deal with parking, you're going to have so much on-street parking. That's going to create a lot of safety hazards. It's going to create, you know, it's going to kill the way that communities have set up the feel of their, of their community more than almost anything else. And so he, he did make that accommodation for me early in the process. But it was also a bill that frankly, from a state needs level, was, was a, it was one of the lowest hanging fruits out there for the state to address the issue. And it wasn't something that's popular with city councils. But, you know, basically our, our population was at about, in 1980, it was about 4.3 persons per household on average. We had dropped down to about 3.8 persons per household on average. And the ADU legislation will likely take it up to about 4.1, 4.2. And, and so when you think about a, you know, And, and so when you think about a, you know, a 15 to 20% increase in supply with a change in the law, as far as the amount of housing, and when you're dealing with the skyrocketing cost of housing, just for your common employees to find housing, that was a Band-Aid for a short period of time, but a necessary one, at least as far as how the state looked at it.
Then the next issue you've brought up about Blue Bison and zoning, what would you recommend to us as a council, how to help support you on concerns? I mean, you've mentioned you're going to support the cities, but what do you see coming down, and how could we help support, or how do we get involved to make sure?
I haven't, I haven't seen anything come through. So I'm not saying that that will for sure happen. I'm saying I've seen a few developers make that play, and that oftentimes it's disguised or it's not, we don't really know what direction it's coming from. And so I'm alerting city councils in the area, you and Alpine, to keep an eye out for it in case I don't recognize it or see it, and you see something or hear about something that addresses that. And the hard part is it depends on how good their lobbyist is and how they structure it. And so, you know, there was a, a couple of years ago, at the end of the 2020 session, on the last day of the session, they were able to get a development that was kind of in between on being annexed into Park City or in the county, and it got through on the last day of session. And the last day is a scary day for everyone, because there's a lot that can happen, because it's moving so fast, and you have your things that you need to get through, and you have a clock, and once it hits that number, you're dead. You know, everything dies automatically, and, and so you're moving through things pretty quickly. And that one got through, and it shouldn't have. It was a bad transaction, and we came back in special session and we, you know, we repealed that, but that's the kind of play that you're keeping an eye out for, you know, because you can get blindsided, and they're purposefully, in some of those situations, kind of setting it up that way. And so I'm asking for your eyes and attention on that as well.
So just from my perspective, relative to Blue Bison, if they pass legislation that would require cities to connect, right, roads or sewer, that's, that's what would impact us, because we've been able to say no, because our roads and our sewer system isn't designed to support the kind of traffic that they'll, or volume that they would add to it. But if, if they were able to sneak a bill in that forced that, then that's how we could be manipulated.
Yeah, so we'd be, we'd be on the lookout for things like that.
So I just have a quick question. We just had Jeff do a presentation on needing to conserve water here, and it's mainly a pressurized irrigation issue right now, but I'm more concerned about long-term culinary water needs, especially with the explosive growth. I mean, we have another developer who's got all the property around Micron and wants to put in 2,400 residences, which is equivalent to half the population in Highland, in a very small area. And we have these developers like Blue Bison and all these other things. What things are going on in the legislature to make sure we have enough culinary water? Because that's a bigger concern, because if you can't get a drink or flush your toilet, that's bad news.
Yeah. So some of that is created by the nature of water rights and the idea that, you know, you have to use them to maintain them. And so you have a lot of farming water rights that may, they perhaps don't need, but they don't want to lose their water rights by not using. And so a couple of years ago, we passed a bill related to water banking, and that's being implemented, and that allows for a little bit of a different approach to how we deal with water. And that's one of the good compromises that I've seen in the state, where a lot of the, and it's more, I, I'm always wary to delve into, to step into the water, because it's, it's a complicated, and it's a complicated system that runs counter to what you normally think about property rights as. Like, everything is kind of, it's like a bizarro world in the law. And I know enough about it to know that I'm, that I'm out of my depth, you know, everything goes into some weird pun whenever you talk about water. But the idea is that they would be able to take some of the water that they have and bank it and allow others to use it, you know, so a city could purchase water and use it in a very simplistic way. It's more complicated than that. Additionally, the other more big-picture thing, so that kind of takes some of the technical side of finding water, and we use, the vast majority of our water is used in agricultural uses that are not as high-impact, and a lot of the cities, even though there may be priority, there are ways to work through the water engineer to get the higher priority agricultural uses down to the cities, should that need occur. However, there are, the other larger, more structural issue is the Colorado River Water Compact. And basically what that does is, is the Colorado River has, they overestimated when they did it, it was like 1922 or so, but about 15, I'm going to screw up the, I think it's cubic feet per, 15 million cubic feet per minute, or something like that. 15 million is, was the unit, but I don't remember the metric. And they allocated 7.5 to the Upper Basin states and 7.5 to the Lower Basin states, the Lower Basin being Nevada, Arizona, and California, and the Upper Basin being Utah, Colorado, and I think Wyoming, and I'm going to mix up the Upper Basins a little bit, Idaho. But the basic idea is there's some renegotiation that's happening with that. And we formed the Colorado River Water Authority this last year to provide the resources and to provide the strategic tools for them to negotiate and negotiate fiercely, to maintain our water rights and expand to the extent possible. And that was an allocation of resources, and it was, because it is structured in a negotiating sense, to be more like a piece of litigation, we actually exempted a lot of that in those strategy sessions from our Open and Public Meetings Act, because it is strategically valuable to have our strategy not known to other states. And so we are preparing for that. It is, we, it is too, it is too bad we didn't start this 10 years ago, because I worked at a law firm that, my first law firm out of school was in California. They did the most water law in the state of California, and they were actively talking about how to renegotiate this treaty between the states. And, I mean, they were strategizing to take our water, and we're just getting on board. But, you know, the, it would have been good to do 10 years ago, but the next best time is now. And so we, we did that, and, and I think that it'll, it will pay dividends in the end, at least as far as protecting our water. So it's a, it's a completely valid concern. I think that we can handle it, and the water community has been active in getting ahead of that. But there's, there's definitely maintenance that has to be done to ensure our growth can continue, you know, and they'll have more on the, on the projections and everything as far as what needs to be done when we run out, that kind of thing.
I don't have a question, but I just had kind of an overall comment. When you ask, I guess, kind of what we wanted, one thing that I would really like to see you continue to do, which I, you already do, but would continue, is to watch out for all those times when the state legislature comes to try to tell us what to do in the city. So things like the affordable housing, or things with billboards, or things with, using a certain type of voting, things like that, decisions I would like to see made at the very most local level when possible. And then kind of in response to your point about if we have legislation we want, to talk to you early, I don't have any legislation I want, but I would just love a specific update from you maybe earlier in the session. And I mean, I know you sent out the general one, which I, I read as well, but like, the Utah Lake Authority bill just kind of came out of nowhere for me, and I would love to be able to help advocate for those things on a, on a local level, which I could do better if I knew ahead of time.
And what I will likely do, and is coming into the session, I'll come back and do the same thing and let you know what I'm, what I'm planning to run, you know, and, and so, you know, and I'll have more information on what we're seeing, you know, oftentimes, so usually what happens is the first week to week and a half of January, we start to have our, our caucus meetings, and that's when you start to see the structure of where things are going. Because now they've seen, our House leadership has seen all of the bills, they see what's out there, and they've started to see what the hot-button issues are, and they've started to say, hey, you two are kind of working on the same thing, let's combine that, you two are doing this, let's combine that, let's, we're getting a lot of bills in this area, you know, what's the policy that we want to try to, try to go for? And, and so I'll try to do something just before the session starts, maybe like the week before.
Great, thank you.
And we'll, and we'll try to talk through as much as I can see at that point. There is always, there are always late bills that, that come out, and some of that's drafting, like the Utah Lake Authority bill. We were trying to get that drafted. I put in, in May for that bill, to get it drafted as a priority bill, which meant it was, it had to be the person's, the drafter's top priority, and I didn't get a draft until four weeks, well, I got a draft that was not presentable two weeks before, and then I didn't get the rework draft until three to four weeks into the session. And so there's some that are drafting, and there's some that are purposefully late coming out.
And I just wanted to say thank you, and I mean, thank you to you, but mostly thanks to Nikki and your kids, because I know that it's a big job for both of you, so thank you.
Thanks.
Any other comments, questions? I would just echo Brittany, say thank you.
Hey, thank you all for your service and for all that you do for our city.
Thanks, Nikki.
Thanks.
All right. Andy, Spencer is our new city administrator, and we're just going to let, or not city administrator. Our new city engineer.
Well, that's your new job.
Yeah, he's going to introduce himself and tell us.
You gotta be turning bright red already.
Yes.
So Mayor and Council, it's a pleasure to be here. This is my second week here at the city. Last week was my first week. As you're aware, Todd took another position, and so the city solicited for someone to fill that position, and I was the lucky guy that was selected. So I'm thrilled to be here. A little bit about myself, I graduated Brigham and University as a civil engineer, and I'm a licensed engineer in the state of Utah. Worked for the initial part of my career as a consultant engineer, and then spent a number of years working for the city of American Fork, and spent the last several years working for a private development firm, and now I'm here. So I'm excited to be here, getting to know everyone. I've grown up here in the north end of Utah County, and so I've spent my entire life here and love Utah County, and especially North Utah County. And so while I don't know everything about Highland, I'm learning quickly, but I do have substantial familiarity with the city and a number of the facilities that we have, and also the agencies and, and other water boards, et cetera, that we interact with. So really excited to be here and just look forward to a great second week, and even better third week, and picking up steam for there, from there.
Any questions for Andy?
Well, I have a question. You went to BYU, so does that make you a Cougar fan? Because we have a big BYU fan here, and that would score points with Kurt.
Yeah, I am, I am a Cougar fan.
How many flags do you put in your front yard?
He might have me there. He's got a yard full of flags. But no, I'm very much a Cougar fan, but I do love all of our universities in the state. And I'm all for the U, except for one game every, every year, or every other year, whatever we get these, these days, but other than that, I'm all for all the universities doing as well as possible. But yeah, I'm true Blue at heart.
You said you're not political.
Well, it's wonderful to be here and look forward to getting to know each of you more.
Thank you, Andy.
Thank you.
So we have a few items on our consent agenda. We have meeting minutes, construction contract for HA5 and bonded matrix, and then a construction contract for Onyx Ceiling. Does anybody want to pull any of those? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion, Mayor.
Thank you.
I move that the Highland City Council approve the items on the consent calendar, A, B, and C, as stated in the agenda.
I'll second.
A motion by Scott, second by Kim. We are ready for a vote. And while we're doing that, I want to just thank the Public Works City Engineering staff. These are our last, my understanding is, these are the last projects that we're bidding out for the roads for this year. Is that correct?
Yeah, one more's wrong, and you'll speak at your next meeting for a little bit of crack ceiling to go along with this.
Okay.
Yeah, this basically is the culmination of the big effort.
Okay, so now we've got a schedule for, or not a schedule, but we know what roads are happening. We just don't know necessarily when yet.
Yeah, it's all basically fencing out and we'll run through the balance of the, of the year with the successive project. I'm sorry. Yeah, I apologize. I need to be at the mic. I apologize. I forget the online presence. So I'll just repeat for those that were online. So we will have a very small award, smiling by comparison, next council meeting, and then the projects will commence. Some of the projects have commenced already with some of our patching projects, and then we'll run on through the various seal coating projects and the rehabilitation projects through the balance of the summer and into the early fall. But the ball's rolling, and we're going to get a lot done this summer.
And I believe the last time we talked to Todd Train, the former city engineer, a lot of our trail, where we did some trail maintenance last year, we have some money, you know, allocated this year for trail maintenance. I think he was saying that was going to be towards the fall time period, and I know you're all in.
We're looking towards the, towards the fall, all things going well. This year's going to be concentrated around the Highland Glen Park area. So I know there was, from my understanding and what I've learned thus far, there was a substantial amount of seal code, et cetera, done on the trails last year, and then this year's Highland Glen Park, and then other areas in the coming years.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. All right, we're ready for the big reveal, and that passes unanimously. All right, item four, public hearing ordinance text amendments nuisances. Kelly, you're a nuisance, I guess.
Oh, heavens. I hope not. All right, thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. This is a text amendment just to bring the development code into compliance with the now current municipal code. We had that meeting on May 4th with the city council, and the city council did approve the municipal code amendment regarding the nuisance of noise and light. The, just a synopsis, a quick synopsis of the amendment is right there with separating the overall properties in Highland City into type A, type B, and type C properties, and designating decibel levels for the nuisance of noise, and declaring what is a nuisance, and also helping us out in being able to enforce when we get noise complaints. So basically with the development code update, and the development code in every commercial zone in the existing code, there is a section that describes the nuisance of noise, and we'll have a decibel level, and it's, it's 65 consistently for all the commercial zones as a max decibel level, but then in the town center zone, it does specify measured at the source, and we've all discussed and recognized that that is an issue. And so as part of this amendment, we are just taking all of those declared decibel levels out and just referencing to this section in the municipal code. That way we have it consistent, and just having all of the decibel level maximums in one place. That way it's just a lot easier for both staff, the council, as well as residents, to be able to know what is permitted and what is not. And the Planning Commission did hold, give me just one moment, a public hearing on May 25th, just last Tuesday, and there was no resident comment. The Planning Commission did recommend approval with a six-to-one vote. There was a little bit of concern regarding just the enforcement of it and thinking it was a little too strict, but that was the overall vote, was the recommended approval. And the appropriate notifications were sent out for this meeting as a public hearing, and we haven't received any correspondence. And we as staff do recommend that the city council accept the findings and approve this proposed amendment.
Okay, any questions for Kelly? Okay, any questions for Kelly?
I, I have, oh, did somebody, Tim?
Tim did raise his hand.
Okay, go ahead. I can't see hands over here.
Once again, is the measurement instantaneous or is it over a period of time? So, what you're saying is if, if it's at the source, if a baby cries at 90 decibels, which they do, believe me, if a baby cries at 90 decibels, so they're in, not in compliance, and an anonymous neighbor can call in and make a complaint, the name never to be known by anyone, which bothers me. So, they make a complaint and the baby crying once a night will, will take them out of compliance and they're subject to some sort of finer prosecution. Is that correct?
So, what, with what was passed at the last city council meeting, it did establish there is no measurement at the source. When decibels are measured, they will be measured from the receiving property. And it's also the point of, let me actually just bring it back to this slide. With it being just for type A property, for example, in a residential zone, the 60 decibel levels being the maximum, but you take, it's, how it has that 10 decibel above ambient sound, you would have to do an overall average, so an average measurement of that neighborhood. And that would be taken by getting an average decibel levels over like morning, evening, that type of thing, if that makes sense. And so, you have a super quiet neighborhood where the average ambient sound is 40. If giving it 10 over the 40, and so it would be a maximum of 50 in that, in that residential area. But then, it's just putting a maximum of the 60 decibel levels, as just saying in a residential zone, you cannot have over 60 decibel levels measured from the receiving property. And so, it would not be from where the baby is crying, it would be from the receiving property.
So, is it an instantaneous measurement? Or is it over time as an average or sustained sound over? I know I'm being nitpicky, but this is important.
I guess it would be the instantaneous sound being compared to the average sound. Does that make sense? When you're going from the 10 decibels.
I'm just not crazy about this, but.
Is that right?
Rob, you wanna jump in?
Yeah, so it's, the definition of noise is, is something that's unreasonable and we're putting bounds on it so we understand what the decibel levels are. Someone who has a baby cry, that's not unreasonable, you know, a one-off thing. And then we talked, we talked about this last time when we kind of dealt with it, you know, the police are gonna have to go and enforce this. Right now, I don't know how they really can when it's, it's difficult for them, I think, when we just say, noise is bad and noise is unreasonable. And they're left to kind of figure out, what does noise mean? Now, we're trying to give them some standards. I don't think the police are gonna go arrest someone because, you know, you know, they, they yelled once or a child made a noise that echoed in the backyard. It's something that has to be unreasonable. And now we're giving them a little more guidance of what that means in terms of unreasonableness. So, yeah, it, it can be a one-off noise. I don't know what, maybe if someone, you know, every night lets off an air horn at, you know, 11 o'clock because they thought, this is what I want to do to mark the transition into, you know, at midnight. Sure, that's unreasonable, that's exceed your decibel level.
We finally agree on something. I agree with you.
Great. We found our common ground.
Yes, no air horns. Okay.
But it's, it, I, it's not instantaneous, because it's almost impossible to be instantaneous in the sense that you're talking about. Because somebody has to come out and measure it. And you have to repeatedly do that. So, it can, and instantaneous noise could generate a complaint. But if it's not repeated, then you can never verify it. So, it's, it's a legitimate concern, but I, I think in a practical sense, it, it, it just can't, you can't, it can't be one instantaneous noise at random points in time.
Yeah, it's like with speeding, you know, you get a report, someone calls in and says, hey, there's always people speeding up and down my street. You can't just go arrest, you know, cite everyone because you think they might have driven down a street at a particular time. But that might become an area where we say, oh, there are noise complaints in this area. Let's go out and measure it. Or maybe we know it comes from a certain resident at a certain time, they're engaged in some activity that every once in a while does this kind of thing, then we know that. Someone just saying, hey, they made a lot of noise last night, I didn't like it, that's not helpful. Now, maybe they're having a party outside that goes very late. You can enforce that because it's an ongoing type thing. You can get it out, someone out there and measure it.
Okay, so I, I understand the necessity of this ordinance. And I think it's reasonable that you added the term reasonable. So, I think in this current iteration, I'm, I'm okay with it.
I'm, I'm fine with this ordinance. I think it basically is saying, hey, you know, you're making some noise and you can refer it to this. I don't see us going with the decibel meter and telling people how much their decibel noise is. But, you know, it's used as a backup. Numbers can be used as a backup to help you, you know, have complaints, kind of thing like that. But really, when it comes down to it, it's, it's just gonna help us with this neighborhood issue or noise ordinance issues that we have.
So, Chief Williams, how do you see the enforcement of this happening?
Unstrung.
Will you have a decibel meter?
We currently do not have decibel meters, but, and I don't even know how much they are, so.
I mean, are you gonna go and say, according to my decibel meter?
The problem with noise has been stated before, it's subjective. What's noisy to you may not be noisy to me. But of course, you know, it, it's all different. The enforcement would be by report only. And that's how we do all of these, these types of enforcement is by report. We don't go around with our windows down, listening to loud parties or stereos or whatever it may be. But enforcement would be by report only. In the first few times, it's, we ask for compliance, most of the time that we get it. But if it's an ongoing issue, then, then these types of things come to the council, so.
So, let's bring up, for instance, and I think this council, it was two years ago, we had some residents come in complaining about a motorcycle jump, jump area in the back of their backyard. And it was keeping people up or they couldn't, you know, they couldn't have it. Of course, the dust was one issue, we, the noise was another concern. How would, so with that situation, how would the police now go about? Would they give kind of a notice saying, hey, we've been notified, there might be some noises, there could be a warning, is there a ticket? Is this arrestable? What, you know, what?
So, it, it's, it's all progressive. So, we start with the least amount of compliance or, or what we'd want, would want compliance to be, the least amount of enforcement necessary, which would be talking to them. If they're going to comply in that particular case, then that would be the end of it. But if it's an ongoing situation like the one that you bring up was, it escalated to, you know, more involvement by us, which I'm not sure, we're not dealing with it anymore. Of course, you know, the, the summer's warming up, but it, it's something that we would, would handle progressively. And each time that we go out there, if they're in violation of the, the city ordinance in this case, then we would protect, we would take the appropriate action if and when the time occurs that we need to do so.
So, just hypothetically, someone happens to be shooting off fireworks. And you would go and, hey, it's kind of noisy at night. You'd come and say, hey, you know, maybe you're disturbing the peace, it's after 11 o'clock or things that mean. And I understand it's out of that, that three-day window of the holiday where they could maybe do it. But I mean, is that, because I assume sometimes you get calls that fireworks are a little bit loud. It would be kind of more of a warning, correct?
Most of the time, yes. But it, it depends on the circumstance.
Like if they're in Scott's neighborhood?
Well, if we're in Scott's neighborhood, there's zero tolerance, so.
Hey, he won't let us do fireworks.
I, I think that's, that's the CCNRs of your, where you live, so. But anyway, it's, it's not, it would be something that, that we would handle on a, on a case-by-case basis. It just depends on the circumstance.
So, I have a quick question.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay. So, if things do escalate and you have to keep warning in one thing or the other, I wasn't sure what fines we would impose. Did I, I didn't see this in the, Kelly? Is there a fine? Does it become a misdemeanor? What does it become? I mean, we have an ordinance, but I just wonder what the true enforcement is. Rob's looking it up.
So, the city does have, because this doesn't specify a particular penalty, it falls to the default city penalty, which is a potential misdemeanor. I mean, it can always be set at a less costly fine, but you know, class B is the, the highest. I mean, you've heard, they don't want to go right to class B misdemeanor for, for these kinds of things, but that's kind of the, if everything else fails, you can get to that point.
Zoning enforcement is all about compliance. That's our goal, no matter what we do, right? So, we're not here to, to find, to issue citations, to fine people, to be a heavy hammer. Reminds me of an experience I had with a former council member, member a few years ago, when the city had a, what they called the sign Nazi at the time. And you'd go around and you would remove welcome home missionary signs. And at that point, I said, well, you hired the wrong person. Or you didn't have the wrong, right leadership. Because the, the idea here is that we have an enforcement capability when we need it. And 90% of the cases, 95% of the cases, they don't even make it to, and we're, we're doing, we're collecting data right now, we'll do, we're getting a presentation ready for the council. But they don't even make it to our city prosecutor, much less the judge. So, our goal is to work with a property owner to achieve compliance, whether it's been, whether it's weeds, whether it's noise complaints, whether it's illegal use, whatever it is, our goal is to work with that individual owner to achieve compliance for that zoning. And we have much better success rates and we have much better results doing that than we'd ever go in and say, well, here's a ticket for zoning compliance. And, and so, when we're dealing with a noise, we're looking for patterns of behavior, just like for lack, in the lack of a better description, just like you're, you know, when, when you're dealing with high school kids or you're dealing with your own children or anything like that, you're looking for patterns of behavior. If it's a repeat offender, it's gonna be different. If it's a one-time, you're saying, come on, you know, let's, let's, let's work together and deal with this. If they're non-responsive, then you have to do something different. That's the approach that we do. And, and for the most part, it's been successful in working with folks to do that. You do have some folks that, that just ignore what you do and you have to be able to say, hey, this is, this is the penalty. And they end up in front of a judge and you go through that process. And unfortunately, you get that far. But, you know, the large majority of the time, you end up working it out and, and, and gaining compliance that way. That's the goal anyways.
Well, I appreciate that. Can I do a follow-up?
Yeah.
In case you have a question. So, you know, another item in the agenda, I mean, what has kind of driven these changes in the noise nuisance ordinance and different things, is a facility that was having dances and making a lot of noise. So, and coming up on the agenda, we're gonna ban that ability to do that. But yet, we have big exemptions in the city like the high school. I mean, when the high school has things out there, it's really noisy. I don't mind the noise, because I think it's part of being in the city. But, I mean, I'm just kind of, you know, we took the one right to extreme and banned it. And so, I just kind of wanted to know the steps to enforce, because obviously in that case, we're banning the use, so.
Right. Yeah, I just felt it'd be good to understand the philosophy and the approach that we do. No, good question.
Brittany, did you have something?
Oh, no, I was just gonna say something similar. We don't have any desire to be heavy-handed with our policing. This is just a, a way to have a consequence when it becomes a problem. So, I think the goal is probably for this to not ever have to really be used. It's just there if you need it. So, I'm in favor of this and I'm ready to make a motion.
We'll put pause on that.
Public hearing.
So, I'll open up a public hearing on the topic. If anybody wants to speak to it, you're welcome to speak to it. It's one of my use my hammer, it's only time. So, if I startled you, I apologize. Yes?
I'll take the mic off.
Go ahead, yeah, I'll have to come up to the mic and state your name, just because we're recording and, and so.
Peter Kilgore, I live in Viewpoint. Just to put it in perspective, 10 dB is, DBs are in logarithmic scale. So, using his example, or her example, a 40 dB, you go up to 50. That's not 20% increase. It's a three times. So, it's three times as loud at 50 as it was at 40. Just to put it in perspective.
Okay, thank you. That's very useful. Very, very useful, thank you. All right. Thank you for any other public comment? Anything online? Nope? All right, in that case.
Mayor, is this, is this one a public hearing?
Yes.
It is. There is a, an individual I've been conversing with online. He just commented that he's on his way. Obviously, you would vote before that. I can, I can read his comments.
Sure, let's do that.
So, the username is Z Full Throttled. He said, "A person is allowed to know their accuser if the government is planning on fining a person for any reason. And the reason is because of the complaint, the person has a right to face their accuser. Don't start making arbitrary laws that are stupid." I let him know that the city is the accuser, becomes the accuser in code enforcement situations because we don't enforce anything unless we witness it. He responded, "It's not how the law works. If an individual files a complaint about another person, the person has a right to face their accuser. Now, they're saying it's a misdemeanor, so then a person for sure has the right to face their accuser. So, as a community, we are looking to add more laws that won't, can't be enforced. This is being heavy-handed." I responded saying, "This update will hopefully allow the city to better enforce current ordinances when it becomes necessary." He mentioned, "I'm on my way there now. I don't think it's appropriate."
I would just echo your comments back that we don't, well, it is frustrating to be complained on and, and not know who your accuser is. The city will never take an action until they verify that the problem exists. So, then, like Aaron said, the city becomes the complainant because we've gone out, investigated, and had our own experiences. So, that's, and to me, that's completely fair. Because, you know, anybody can tell somebody anything, but we, we end up verifying it and then become the accuser, if you will. So, I'm, I'm perfectly good with that. All right, the public hearing is closed. And so, I am ready for a motion.
Brittany?
Yeah, I would make a motion that we approve the findings and approve the proposed amendment to the sections of the development code relating to the nuisance of noise in commercial zones as recommended by the planning commission.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Brittany, second by Kim. Are we ready for a vote?
I just have a quick question.
Okay.
You, it's, you state that it's regarding commercial zones, but we were discussing residential zones earlier.
That was in the municipal code amendment from the last city council meeting. This amendment is just for the development code that is just pertaining to commercial zones.
Got it. As long as it precludes residential.
That passes unanimously. Next item, item five, public hearing ordinance text amendment, sports and fitness. Kelly, again.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Hey, you're the one that taught me to say that. All right, sports and fitness centers are permitted in three zones, three commercial zones, the C1, CR, and the town center overlay. Because of several resident complaints and participation in city council meetings, it has created the need to clarify the definition of sports and fitness centers and what, what that means and the intent of permitting sports and fitness centers in these zones. This amendment, we, okay, basically, we added a prohibited use to eat the three of these zones, C1, CR, and town center overlay. And that prohibited use is social dances. And then we, and the proposed amendment added two definitions, two chapter 10 definitions in the development code, one of them being sports and fitness, which is on the next slide in just a moment. Sports and fitness centers. sports and fitness centers. And then the next definition is social dances, just to, or social dance facilities. And that's just to make those two things very clear. And we also just, in the C1 zone, changed the word from fitness centers to sports and fitness centers just to make sure that that definition would apply to that permitted use in the C1 zone as well. So these are the two definitions. And basically, social dance facilities are defined as, I'm just trying to like, do a little synopsis of this. Basically, anything that isn't in organized instruction. And so when you have zumba classes or things that are organized, where you have a teacher or someone, or a class, or a team that's doing some sort of fitness activity or a dance, fitness activity, that is not included in social dance facilities. It's more of, well, what it says in the word is social. So things being open to the public and not part of an organized instruction. And then the definition for sports and fitness centers just clarifies that it's used for physical instruction, training, conditioning, exercising, and sports activities. So it's just pointing out that when that's a permitted use in a zone, that is what's permitted under sports and fitness centers. And we, this was presented to the planning commission on May 25th, and a public hearing was also held, and there was no public comment. And they did recommend approval at a six to one vote. And like the other public hearing, the appropriate notices were sent out for this public hearing, which will be held in a moment. And we have received no correspondence for that either. And we, as, you can go ahead.
So, let's, let's have a public hearing now, so if there's any input, then council can include that in our, in their deliberation. Public hearing open. Any comments on this one? Thank you for the other one on the decibels, that was very good. Thanks for coming.
So if anyone on Zoom wants to make a public comment, please raise your hand. I'm not seeing anything on YouTube, Mayor. I'll just wait a minute for Zoom to see if anybody does. But I think you're okay.
Okay, so public hearing closed, council discussion.
So are we doing a Footloose ordinance? What I mean is, this reminds me of the Footloose movie. You know that here, here we have a city council banning dances in the city. And I guess that's the question, is where would it be a permitted use to be able to do a dance in the city? I mean, I'm looking through the uses, okay. This is going to be along with the slaughtering house, sexual orientation, call center, alcohol sales, thrift sales, tattoo parlors, parlors, and social dancing facilities. What I'm going to say is, I read this and go, what are we doing?
Scott refocuses his camera on you, Kurt.
We have another Two Minute Tuesday moment.
I'm just, I'm not, I'm just trying to understand. Where would be a permitted use if someone wants, is it at, at schools, at churches?
Schools and churches are excluded from this.
Kurt, it's, it's so obvious, dancing is evil. And it just needs to be banned completely in the home and in public places.
Maybe have Kurt's head.
It also does not apply, the prohibition on social dances is only for commercial zones in the town center, so not to residential zones. So, I know there's a few, I think Clubhouse or something within residential zones, so those aren't included within this.
Hey, Rob, I have a question for you. So it's saying here that it doesn't include schools or churches if the use of school or church as a social dance facility is occasional, incidental, whatever. Is there some form of discrimination saying that it doesn't, you know, we're giving an exception to schools and churches, even though they're not zoned for it, but we're not giving an exception to other facilities? Like why can't, you know, a facility then, I mean, I guess I'm asking, why can't I have that exception also? Why just the church, why the school?
The council could. The, the distinction I made was, based on the council's discussion of this matter over the past few sessions, it sounded like this was the direction the council was looking for, or at least it should in exploring. And part of that was defining what the city's understanding of sports and facility, or sports and fitness centers was, or has the city has traditionally understood it to be. What dances and where that type of thing is allowed. I know generally, schools hold dances, churches, you'll have receptions, or, you know.
So there's no legal issues with allowing it at some facilities and not at others? I just want to make sure that legally, it's okay to do that.
Generally, yes, zoning is a type of matter, as long as you're not discriminating against a specific person or a protected class of people, you're not doing it with that kind of discriminatory intent. The fact that you are discriminating between uses is not in and of itself a problem.
So, Rob, just an observation here. We didn't necessarily even need to do that exclusion because schools and churches are typically in residential zones.
Correct, we were just making sure it was clear in case there was some kind of overlap. And also, there's, nope, thought, thought's gone. Nope.
No, that's good, Mayor, I like that.
So, help us, Rob. So we have a facility called Just Dance here along SR 92. Now, they, they teach dance, but I imagine their, their whole purpose is dance with music. Now, this is a social aspect, what you're saying, there's a difference in, in a classes, or if there's a zumba class going on, this is where there's going to be social dances in, in a certain type of zone, which we're, but we're looking at this for all commercial zones. It's not just our town center, it's in our, it's in all commercial zones that no dances could, could happen. So let me ask, and I'm just, I'm not trying, but let's assume that Highland Glen Assisted Living Center has a dance. Is, are, are they?
I'd like to see that. You can come see interesting ones at the dev center.
So, so would they be violating if we passed an ordinance that Highland Glen Assisted Living, if they decide to get up and do a dance there? And I'm not, I'm just trying to understand what ordinances we're doing here.
So, if they decided to host a public dance that everyone can come in and join into an unstructured, you know, club-esque dance, sure, that would technically be a violation of this.
So.
Oh, but is it, is it in a residential zone? Then no. And also, the point I had before that I forgot when I was speaking, is, this is, the city already prohibits uses that aren't allowed, if that makes sense. Unless it's a specified allowed use, the use is prohibited. My understanding, stat understanding, was that this was already not a permitted use. There's just been some question on the definition of things. So we're clarifying what the city's understanding of the law as it already has been, and making sure that's clear to everyone else. So, in that regard, we're trying to clarify things, not change things necessarily.
So Kurt, one thing that had, had bothered me is, a few months ago, somebody applied to open a reception center. And we said no to that because it wasn't a permitted use. And so then, my question is, was, when does that become what that thing is versus something else that they're using it for? So if we said, no reception centers are allowed, but we're letting a different facility that calls itself something else, hold a very similar event to that, it just seems inconsistent to me.
So, let me clarify a little bit. And has the point changed their name? Is Just Dance the point, no?
Oh, I guess it's still the point, I'm sorry.
It's still the point. So, we have the point that teaches all forms of dance, and they do exercise and different things. So they're in the commercial zone. And so are we saying that they can, I mean, they can have performances of their dancers, but they could never have a social dance? Is that what we're seeing? Because that's their business.
And maybe, my understanding is, do they open up the, their studio for?
I don't think they've opened it up for social dance, but I believe they have performances there.
A performance would be a different, that's not a social dance, in, in my view. That's a, that's an organized event. You know, that was part of a, you know, you usually have training programs, you practice, you go through routines, then you do your recital, your performance. That's not a social dance where people are coming in, using their floor or their, you know, various dance studios for, you know, getting a DJ and having a dance. And that's, that's the distinction we're trying to draw with these definitions. So that the point, or Just Dance, I forget which one it is, that would still continue without issue as that's a permitted use, and that would not change under these definitions.
So, and some of the reasons why we were concerned about reception centers, or why this is an issue, is because of parking constraints. And also because social dances generally are held outside of the normal business hours that we allow, which is what, like seven to 10 or something? So it was a lot about parking in the evenings when people are home and noise in the evenings as well. It was what we talked about in regards to reception centers.
Yeah, this makes a lot more sense with the clarification between what can be allowed in a residential zone. So I'm fine with this. You know, as long as I can hold a dance off at Kurt's house, I think I am okay to pass this.
Well, that was really the question, is we can do, I mean.
Yeah, we can still continue our dance off, Kurt.
No, so, but this is still a commercial use. So we have a town center, and I recognize the zoning in town center has a lot of residential around it. But Kelly, my understanding, this is going to comply with all zoning commercial throughout the city. There's only town center.
It's, it's C1, CR, and the town center. So like, sports and fitness centers are not permitted in the PO zone. It's not permitted in the residential professional zone. It's only in those three commercial zones. So that's what it applies to.
C1 is Macy's, CR is Blue Lemon, and Town Center, obviously, you know.
I'd like to make a motion if we're ready for that. I.
I would, I would just add a note before you do that, that I think when it comes to compliance and enforcement, that we should have staff talk with, for example, Norton and say, okay, if, if stuff has been scheduled, let's provide staff flexibility to deal with limiting, changing something that's currently happening.
Like a grandfather, maybe until the end of the year or for 12 months. Because they might have some events scheduled where they've taken deposits. And this, this ordinance would affect them and a scheduled events if they happen to have some. You know, this, this is possibly brought out because of the COVID situation, you know, where dances were not allowed at schools or other places. And so Norton Performance, and I'm not saying we're just trying to do it for Norton, but maybe that type of use came in because of the restricted areas of others being shut down. I don't know how far, you know, how much further it's going to keep going after COVID, but we don't know. We could have also another spur up of some other type of things.
No, I love that.
So, before the motion's made, I've been sitting here trying to kind of work through this. It seems like we had some complaints about one business that started having social dances. We're trying to clarify what's permitted, what's not permitted. But it seems like we had a problem, and we're changing all the ordinances in the city and then banning this business from doing the social dancing thing. I'm concerned about the parking and these issues too, but it seems like we kind of went to one kind of extreme on this. I'm going to have a hard time banning social dances. And I understand where this is coming from, I just kind of struggle with it a little bit, I'll just be honest.
And what Scott was saying, I thought when we brought about the noise ordinance, to try to help in if there was a social dance going on where the noise, because I was going, let's assume they're inside Norton Performance dancing, is it the noise or is it the dance? I understand there's some parking issues, but some of those commercial businesses around there are shut down in the evening. I think that's what you're talking about, Scott, is, is it the noise that the residents are complaining about?
Is it parking?
Is it parking? Is it the, the, the type of clientele that they, that is now starting to rent the facility? You know, what, what was the concerns? And it does appear we've also started changing code just to meet this one business issue, so.
Well, the complaints included noise, but it also included what stuff happening in the parking lot. And, you know, as the dance went on down, there was some disruptive behavior. It, it, and I think to Rob's point and Nathan's point, when we approved a sports and fitness center, I don't think it was envisioned that it would be a reception center or a social dance center. And so, in essence, the ordinance is just clarifying, this is the use that we were permitting when we did that. We didn't explicitly allow it, but we didn't, and we didn't explicitly exclude it, but we're, so we were trying to clarify what is in the allowed part. My concern about the, working with staff to, to figure out how do we wind this down or enforcement, is because it, it did persist. And by not telling them right away it's explicitly not allowed, I think, we allowed them to, to set up something where they could have stuff scheduled. And I think it would be just a courtesy to allow graceful unwind on that one. But to, to, to the point, when we approved a sports and fitness center, you know, we didn't approve a restaurant, we didn't approve a dance hall, we didn't approve a tire, you know, any kind of a, they could start doing something repair in, in that space when it's not, you know, it could turn into a Burt Brothers at night for whatever they wanted to do in their welding. I don't know what you could do in that thing. But, I know I'm pushing it to an extreme, but we're just clarifying what's explicitly allowed and what is, is not on this one.
I would like to understand from Scott, Scott, so, like in your mind, is it better to allow reception centers or something like that? Or do you think that this is a different use than that? I just, I don't like inconsistency.
Well, I'm not really opposed to reception centers, as there is appropriate parking and different things. And I think the one reception center that was proposed, there was a concern because it was on the border of a residential area. There wasn't enough parking, that was the issues there. I'm not sure that I'm opposed to having reception centers in the city. I think, you know, there's some very lovely ones in other cities that we go to all the time, and they seem to resolve some of those issues. I, I just, you know, I've, I've voiced concerns about the parking and the noise and all those things. I'm just not quite to the point where I feel like we need to kind of ban it because we had one problem. It just seems like we should work with the business a little bit. Because it, we're not going to have social dances in any other place that I know of. We don't have any place big enough, right?
Um, yeah.
Yeah. So I, I don't know, it seems like we're just changing all ordinances for one business. And I understand where the staff's coming from, I understand where the mayor's coming from. I'm just kind of struggling with it, to be honest.
If we want, my point of view, if we want a social or reception center somewhere, it's possible that it wouldn't be any of these three zones, so it may not be an issue. And if one comes here and we feel like there's sufficient parking, you could amend the code to allow that social, that reception center, there just isn't precluded. It just says, as defined today, a sports and fitness center is not a, a social dance hall.
You know, and I guess where, where I'm at, kind of the dance centers, I understand the town center because of the residential uses that are close by, but I don't, I'm not sure about adding all the other zones as, as, as they can't do social dancing in them. That, I mean.
That's the only other zones are Macy's and the Blue Lemon, which is all what we would consider town center, right?
So the C, all the others are going to be PO, or where's all the, share with us a little bit, you know, so we can be educated. I know we have office zoning over there on Highland Boulevard, lots along 4800 West, the type of zoning.
So 4800 West, as far as commercial zoning goes. The assisted living is called our senior care assisted living overlay zone, and then you have a professional office zone.
And the overlay is on top of a residential, is that?
Oh, and you have a PD district too, which.
And then over by Quick Quack, what's the zone over there?
Quick Quack is CR. And then, and then PO. So the, the, when we were doing the.
Elevated?
Reception center, it had to deal with amending the code to allow reception centers in a PO district. That was.
And like Scott, I'm not against a reception center, but that one happened to exit into a residential neighborhood, adding more traffic. I mean, you know, some of it is that specific zone that maybe that was in, so.
Okay, I think we're back to the motion. Kim, you were gonna?
Yes, I move that the city council accept the findings and approve of the proposed amendment to chapter 10 definitions in the development code to clarify the permitted use of sports and fitness centers in the C1 zone, CR's zone, and town center overlay as recommended by. by the planning commission. And then we need to add an amendment on there?
Or just instructions to council to.
To staff.
No, that wouldn't be, excuse me, that wouldn't be an amendment as part of the motion.
Just, it would be a.
If and when it became an issue, then we would work with the owner to deal with it.
And if it becomes an issue, we'll work with the owner?
As far as enforcement goes.
Okay. What Nathan said.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion by Kim, second by Brittany. We are ready for a vote. Okay, so we'll let everybody vote except for Tim. And then, Tim, you're going to vote? He's going to say yes, and. Okay, so then that fails, three to two. All right, next item.
That was so exciting.
I should have paused a little bit more.
All right. Item six, that's Kelly again, right?
No, these are Rob.
It's a Rob.
Rob, we're paying him to be here, so we're paying him to present to you. It's inside joke.
He's earning his money.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. This is a follow-up to the multiple discussions the city council has held regarding open space and the disposal process. We have a series of agenda items that are coming before you today. And it's just kind of as an overall view of what we're doing. We are adopting a resolution that sets forth the city's policy regarding generally how you designate certain city property as orphan parcels to be disposed of. That will be kind of in place on an ongoing basis, likely won't touch that unless you decide to, you know, revamp this whole process. We're also amending the city's code a bit to make it easier to dispose of these orphan parcels without going through a full notice appraisal process. That's not what we wanted to do for these smaller things, so it makes it easier to handle them. And then we're also designating, you'll adopt a very small resolution that says for 2021, the price per square foot for these parcels will be $274, I think is what it is. And then in a future date, once we've compiled all of those properties and the council has a chance to review them, you'll adopt one final resolution regarding the actual designation of properties as surplus able to be disposed of under everything that we're doing today. So the first one that comes up is the adoption of the orphan parcel policy. This is a resolution, we've kind of walked through this before. This sets out the general criteria that the city council will be looking at when you go to designate a parcel of land as a surplus orphan parcel, as well as the criteria that the council looks at when setting the annual price per square foot for that, and the annual review and that 30-day window where people can come in and comment and ask for new parcels to be designated, and it outlines that entire process. This is a resolution and a policy, it doesn't go into the city's code, it's just going to help guide the council and help guide Highland City residents on how they can proceed with these orphan parcels. You are reviewing this, we've tried to make some changes, there were some concerns on language regarding criteria. And again, these criteria regarding, you know, which properties are going to be designated as orphan parcels, these are not set in stone in that, they give an outline of what you can consider, obviously the council can consider more or different factors. Each decision to sell property that is owned by the city is a legislative policy-based decision. We're just trying to set out the overall guidelines so everyone kind of is on the same page regarding this moving forward. So with that, any questions on the language of this policy? Any discussion, we're happy to answer questions.
So I would just note that that's then why you wrote meets the following non-exclusive criteria, saying this isn't the be-all and-all, this is not the exclusive list, there are, there could be others, other factors that weigh in on any decision.
Yes, there's eight factors that are kind of currently listed in there for what property can be sold of. These are the factors, I think the mayor identified, brought to the council before, the council's discussed them. There may be something else that we're not aware of that someone comes and says, this property is unique in a different way, and the council can certainly take that into consideration. These were just good guidelines, mostly for the council and I think particularly for city residents to know, hey, if this is property that kind of meets these general criteria, that might be something the council's willing to entertain to sell. It doesn't bind the council either way, but it's guidance, it's a policy.
So Rob, kind of where it came from to now, it used to be that the, it was resident-led and the residents would go out and, you know, they would go gather signatures and then they'd bring it to the council. This is now going to be, they can submit to the council, they don't have to go gather, you know, in such like 70% of that plat amendment. Was there a reason that you understand, why was the last requirement like a 70% of the residents in a plat versus now where we're not making any type of requirement like that? Is there concerns or things of that nature?
I can answer that. We, because we wanted the, at the time when it was proposed, the idea was to have a majority to reflect the majority of the folks in the subdivision as the proposal came forward. Those were just the numbers that we came up with and it came down as the subdivision got larger. When you had a small subdivision like Canterbury Circle, for example, the idea was that most people should agree in that, and the burden became lar, when you had a larger subdivision, the number of signatures at 70% was harder to achieve, so the percentage came down based on numbers.
So with that, what are we doing to notify, so let's assume we have a neighbor that wants to buy a parcel, we've had several submit, in the processes, and maybe it's a, are we notifying residents with a certain thing that, because, you know, there might be some that they might have an opportunity to buy that are right next door, you know, there's, I know there was one that was submitted that had other people that backed up to the parcel, you know, one submitted, and then I know there's two or three other neighbors that maybe could have participated in that purchase.
So there's no strict notice requirements now going forward. This would be a situation where, say there's a, you know, we've looked at different parcels before, the council has, and you kind of are addressing various subdivisions where there's, you know, a strip of land here, a land there. Someone could come in and say, I want the small parcel behind my household. That's great, the council can consider that, but as part of that, the council can say, well, it looks like there's also neighbors to the side, have you gone out and talked to them? And then you just address it on a case-by-case basis, and it, you're removing the petition process where someone had to go out and collect signatures from, or talk with all of their neighbors, which ended up being a very, I believe, divisive process for a lot of neighborhoods, and making it more an individual case-by-case basis, where the council will designate certain ones, you allow residents to come in and propose others, and then we'll consider each of those on its own merits. There are certain, I think, in the non-exclusive criteria that we talked about for whether a property should be sold, the council said that they would look at, you know, are we leaving, are we, you know, leaving little orphaned, even more orphaned, I guess, parcels behind where there's one parcel, everything else around it is sold, maybe that means we don't want to sell that. That would just be for the council to take a look at, and you can always instruct staff to put out a notice, if there's a, you know, maybe there's a larger strip that's more important, you can put out a, you know, a newspaper notice, or we can put something on the website where we say, this is currently what we're looking at, and maybe on the annual, where we start the process of re-reviewing property and prices, maybe there's some kind of notice process the council would like to go for that. We're kind of leaving it more open-ended, so the council can look at what it wants to look at, rather than being a little more restrictive of a process.
On the second half, and this just becomes, just over the last many years, I remember some comments and just kind of doing a little research, one, the concerns was, and I think we've discussed this before, is plat amendments, is that when a person comes into a subdivision, they can go on Utah County website, see a plat, they recognize that some of those plats were dedicated to Highland City as open space. As we go about, you know, disposing of some of that open space, but I don't, I don't think we're doing a plat amendment, there had been a concern, there, I remember, you know, there were, I think I discussed, I can't remember if the person that was discussing with me, it was an attorney, but they said, hey, that could put the city at some liability issues, because the plat that was recorded has been amended or, and it doesn't look like when that resident comes and buys in, because the city has sold off the open space, and maybe it doesn't fit that criteria of an open space subdivision again.
So I think, and correct me if I, I think I heard two different issues in there, one being just plat amendments generally, where we now, you know, a plat is designated, it has, shows all the lots, and they'll show open space parcels in certain areas, what happens when we sell off parts of that? This process, when the city sells it, you're selling a lot essentially, you know, a little meets and bounds description of open space that goes to someone. And as the council's seen throughout, you know, the months, people will come in and request the council approve an amendment so that their lot, that encompasses that entire open space. Otherwise, it's just two different little parcels that have the same owner. That's not a particular issue, anyone looking through title searches can find that matter. And if someone wants to transfer that land, they just have to, you know, execute the deeds for it, and if they want to consolidate it all into one lot, there's a plat amendment process that they can go through. I think the second issue was, what happens if the city is selling property that was given to the city in order to basically induce the city to approve a lot or a subdivision under the open space subdivision process? This is a purely policy matter, that's a decision for the council to make. An application when it comes in has to be, has to meet city's code at the time it comes in. And the city council could look at that and say, well, we wouldn't have approved it without this open space, so we won't ever sell it. But as a legal matter, it's not really an issue that the city has sold off land that was originally given to the city as open space, that would make the entire subdivision, if it were submitted now, illegal. There may be some issues regarding general, just open space matters, that's, that's a more far-off concern. Regarding just the zoning issue of, the subdivision wouldn't have been approved without this land, that's a judgment called by the council to make. And sometimes the issue is, yeah, the city got open space as part of an open space subdivision, some of that open space really wasn't usable, so how valuable was it in the first place? And should the city be bound by the fact that, you know, a previous city council approved it with this maybe substandard in the city council's view, open space? Again, judgment called by the council.
So just a follow-up, because I just, I just want to make sure legally, because I just, I remember some questions coming up or things, so let's assume we have a space that is usable, so it's back behind people's houses, they have been able to use it, and yet we sell that and they're able to fence that in, so that usable open space now becomes part of a lot and they fence it in, is there any legality where, I mean, and I understand we have native open space that maybe no one's walked behind, and I think that's some of the properties we've been looking at, there's some, probably no one's really ever ventured behind, it's not really used, it was the criteria, it doesn't, it doesn't really be used as open space, and maybe that's up to the council, but if it is used as open space, mine's more legality, if it's used as open space, we now have an application that comes in that we'd like to buy it, the council agrees to that, is there some legality that we could be taking upon ourselves?
Not directly related to ownership of open space, cities can sell off parks, open space, you know, any public facilities, so long as you get, as long as the city gets reasonable consideration in exchange for that, the decision whether to sell is a policy matter, so.
So I agree with this policy generally, I think we've done a good job and I think we've thought it through. The one question that I have right now, though, is as requests have come in over the last few weeks, it's been interesting because most of them, in their request, will like go through the criteria and explain why their property meets the criteria. And so it seems as if maybe people think that those criteria are more objective, when a lot of them are actually subjective. And I feel like as we've looked at different properties, I've seen other things as well that we maybe should take into account. So I think this was a really great set of criteria when we came up with it, but I think that over the last month or so, I've just seen, I don't know, that I think we might need to just refine the criteria a little bit or something. Would it be possible to, I don't know, I'm totally in favor of the way that we determine price, I'm in favor of the process, I wonder if it would be beneficial to talk about, about these criteria when we're talking about individual properties instead, instead of just like looking at them as a whole and then, and I know that you're, like, the intent is that these aren't like, like set and we still have some discretion, but I just think that whatever we do needs to be consistent again and transparent. I want people to understand why, if they think their, their property met all these criteria, why maybe we feel differently than that.
I can see where you're going with that, just looking at this one, property should not be disposed of if it adds to the open space fill at an open space neighborhood. Well, I could think that does not add to the open space filled, this certain property, but you could think it does. And so I think some of these criteria do need to be tweaked, because we want to make this basically just as objective as possible, so that when somebody comes and says, hey, my property that I would like to acquire meets every single one of these criteria, and then we come back and say, no, because we think differently, I think we could run into problems that way.
So I agree with both Brittany and Kim on this issue, because I like the process that we're doing, we've made a lot of progress, I've been involved in open space issues for 11 years now, so I like the direction we're going, but I have trouble with some of the criteria here too, because, for example, in 1A, we talk about a trail corridor, but I'm not sure what that means, does that mean a paved trail, does it mean a gravel trail, does it mean a potential trail? I mean, there was actually a trail corridor designed in Canterbury Circle behind people's homes, but there would, that would never be developed, so it seems to me like we'd be, we need to be a little more specific what we're talking about here. I agree with Kim, who determines the fill of an open space neighborhood? Is it the city manager, or is it a couple of neighbors that don't want somebody to buy some open space? I just think we need to kind of tweak the criteria and make it a little more specific, because like in A and F, they're closely related, it seems like they could be combined and we really could define things better. A lot of the criteria I like, but I, I think, and then how do you, we talk about on the irrigation on D, would result in increase of irrigable, I never can say that word, acreage that would unduly strain or burden the city's pressurized irrigation system. What does it mean to unduly or strain? Because we're all straining the system this year because there's no water. So, I mean, how, I, some of this stuff, you can't make real objective, I understand that, but it seems like we could move a little more towards, if we're going to make objective decisions, we can't have subjective criteria. Does that make sense?
And maybe I'll just add a comment. The sale of property that is owned by the city is inherently a subjective policy-based decision. Now, the council could go for a very objective approach, and I think that was the way the council tried to approach the neighborhood option trails and that whole petition process, where there was kind of a more structured way that didn't work out for various reasons, because ultimately, you could have a very objective list, where if your property is under .15 acres that you're trying to buy, and it's not within, you know, 100 feet of any trail, and you could go and list very specific factors, and there might yet be a property that the city still doesn't want to sell, even if it meets that. And the city would still have the ability to say no, but then you've set more specific expectations. Ultimately, it's going to be the council's call, you can go far more objective, we've tried to tweak these a couple of times, we can revisit them again and again, as often as the council would like. The question is, how objective does the council want to go? And, because you're right, does it add to the open space feel of a, of an open space subdivision? I have no way of measuring that. The council, some of you, I believe, or all of you, should have an opinion on that. I believe the residents would have their own opinions on that and they can present that, and the council has to weigh all those factors, that's.
Can I make a suggestion? How would it work if we could do an approval tonight of maybe the price and the process, but then, last time I talked about maybe having work sessions before council, what if we had a work session before our next meeting, where especially with this first batch of properties that we go through and just look at them as a council, so we're not taking up all the meeting time, look at them as a council, see what we. taking up all the meeting time, look at them as a council, see what we think, and then I think maybe the criteria would become more clear. Because I know that when I've been in a committee with, with Kurt and Mayor, it makes sense when you're looking at the property. It makes sense. It's, yeah, it's harder to just look at the list. So, and I know residents are in a hurry, you know.
I like, I like that idea to have a work session. May we get the list, a list out so if the council, some might want to go see it. I mean, one thing I started recognizing, it's easy to see on Google, but I think I need to maybe go see the property. If we're really going to sell it, go visit. Because one of the things that, you know, that's on the criteria, as we started to look, we noticed that if also we sell it, we have a smooth line where the property line's at, and also if we sell it, we're going to have a jog out and jog back in, and we're going, okay, you know, is that the fill and the look the council wants? Also, these jogging property owners going across, there's a, a smooth line, and that will be objective to each council. And each council will be able to change this. I mean, we're not going to be able to set a council exactly what the criteria, it helps us as a council for a criteria as for residents coming in, but.
I like that a lot, especially because I, I was getting worried seeing that this is on the agenda in two weeks and thinking that I would need to make a blanket approval of what you guys have recommended without being able to. I have to go out, talk to the residents, I need to go look at it for myself, and I want to look over every single one of the criteria as well, the form, you know, give me an approval or not an approval. So if we have a work session as well, I'm going to go do that beforehand and then have a work session to hear what each one of you thinks about it as well. I mean, because this is a once a year process, so we need to give it, you know, as much attention and detail. This really affects people and their houses, their livelihood, and I just, I just want to do it right.
Well, no, we're concerned, I mean, as you talk about the, we're really nervous is if we can set some expectations by what we approve. Also, you approve that jagged situation and, and it's hard to pull back. I mean, really, one of the concerns is, are how fast we want to move. This is a new process, and maybe we need to just try a couple parcels because we could be opening Pandora's box. My fear is, what did we just open and how do we stop it? Because is this criteria helping us or what's going on?
So then that's why it's a little bit better to be more subjective than objective. And then from there, you know, as we go through the approval process, we can see, oh, you know, this might have been a little bit better if it'd been more objective, or this one is good, more subjective. I see where you're going with that.
So could we do a thing where we, because I don't want to make more work for staff and I don't want to frustrate residents more, what if we took it upon ourselves as a council to individually or, you know, and to go visit the properties over the next two weeks and, you know, still possibly vote on the rest of this tonight, but then just look at those criteria and specific properties at a work session on, at our next meeting, before our next meeting, and then we can decide if we want to do as, as Kurt said and start slower and maybe even have a phase one and a phase two for this first year. But I would like to get resident answers, but I would like them to be the, the right answers. So if we took it on ourselves as council rather than outsourcing it to staff, how would that work?
So I need the list of the properties, so, because we've talked a lot of different ones. I don't know where the final list is. Have we been given that?
Mayor sent it today.
Oh, today, okay.
Yeah, so we can go through that list, mayor send it out, look it over, and then, you know, on your own time, go and look at those properties, and then come back to a work session.
Kelly, can you send the, the rest of the council? I think, did you send the council the Dropbox link with all the requests?
It's only the subcommittee and then Kim has access, but I'll, I'll add the rest of the.
I just like access to all things.
I would just want to interject some stuff here. We, we did a criteria to help guide decisions. Now, the danger with transparency is that people, residents get expectations that this is exactly how it's going to work. And that's, so that's why sometimes we want to talk in private before it becomes public. I, I like erring on the side of being public, but we do need to educate the public and they, they should be very aware, if they read the language carefully, that these are not objective criteria exclusively, that the other things could come up. For example, there's no mention here of conservation easements. And a personal policy for me would be if it has a conservation easement on it, then no, it's not for sale. Because you're going to buy it and then you won't be able to use it, so what's the point? Right? And in, in the case of some of the property, it might be for a, a, a collection basin for water, right? That, that, hey, this is here because it helps for drainage, et cetera. It might be unsightly or whatever, but it still serves a purpose. And if we were to sell it or start selling it, then where do you stop? So there are going to be other considerations that come into this and.
See, I really like that because as you guys have been going over this, you've been seeing these guidelines and then saying, you know what, this is something else we need to add, conservation easement.
But it's, I don't, I think there's value in having a very limited list of criteria, but then, like, every cell is subjective and, and you, it's almost impossible to write a list of rules. That's why law is complicated too, because you can't write a very prescriptive list of here's how your behavior is legal, you can't do this and this and this, but if this happens, then it's okay to do that, right? So society creates some general rules and then you, and, and we're elected to be representatives of the people and we're expected to do more homework and to make judgment calls. So I think a part of the, the responsibility we picked up when we got elected was, yeah, we are obligated to spend more time and do homework. We're trying to be transparent, but I, I certainly hope that expectations haven't been set, and it's hard not to have them be set whenever you go public, okay, we're going to do this and this is, these are some of the guidelines that we're going to follow when this happens. And then somebody reads that and says, well, if it meets all this criteria, automatically I get it, right? Well, that's not necessarily the case because there are other circumstances.
So Mayor, I totally, I totally agree with that.
So I don't know how we, my point is, I know we can sit here and try and refine these till the cows come home. I don't think we can because there's always going to be another exception. So maybe the thing is to, let's make this list shorter, shorter and say, and other things as we, as, as makes sense.
But, you know.
Ninth Amendment?
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, I agree with most of that, but, you know, I still think when you have criteria like that, you need to define things. I mean, what is a trail quarter? Is it a, is it a paved trail? Is it a gravel trail? Is it a footpath?
If you read the list of it, Scott, it says on that one, if it is part of a trail quarter, meaning the normal width of a trail and any required buffer, buffer areas unless the council determines that the trail is not used and does not have infrastructure in the ground below. So if it's not used, for example, if it's a dirt trail that somebody, that an animal created or a few people created, we have a few trail quarters.
Actually have some gravel trails and things. I just, I just think it doesn't hurt to be a little more specific on that one.
Sure.
Yeah, I, I don't think that's, should be a big problem. And we don't say anything about open space parks and things. I think there's the assumption that we would never surplus anything, but we don't mention that, we don't mention conservation areas. I think two or three things to just tweak these criteria would be very helpful for people.
So what do you think, Scott? Should we go ahead and pass this with the idea that when we meet for a work session and start looking over these requests, we can then tweak it and kind of learn as we go? And if we want to add to it, amend it, then we can do that? Or would you rather table this and?
I, I would recommend that we have the work session go over some of the criteria and the property. I think the pricing, the way we're doing that, I, I believe I could support all of that. I'd just like to see some of this clarified before we start surpleasing the property in our new process. And I think doing a workshop next time we meet and then just kind of tweak this. I, I support it.
I, I, I think a workshop, a work session's a good idea, but I, I can just, we have about, where are we, 29? Depends how you count, but we could have, because some of them are like 10 potential requests, right? We could have 30 properties to deal with, and I don't see a work session lasting an hour or talking about 30 different properties.
Yeah. And again, I'm just talking about tweaking the language in here before we pass it and not after. It's kind of like when Nancy Pelosi said, we'll read the thing after we pass it.
I think you're always going to want to tweak it. There'll always be a chance to change it. You're never going to be done with tweaking the parameters. So I don't know when you call good, good.
So could we, could we do a hybrid for this time? Because Mayor, I can totally see what you're saying about it's impossible to list all the criteria. And, and so maybe we should list fewer, but then I think that that needs to be replaced then with like a good discussion. So can we pass everything and then just maybe table the part with the criteria and then just consider those as we look at properties in, in two weeks? And, and I think maybe it would become more clear to all of us, like just through discussion, not even through necessarily writing them down. And I agree that we have a tendency to not do things in an hour. But I think that if we took our list and started with ones that seem like we are all more in favor of or, or not, that were obvious yes or no's, we could start there and then see how the process works. So I'm all about like, let's vote on the part of this this week and then in two weeks we could meet to discuss individual properties and the criteria as it would apply to those.
Pass them both, I don't have any problem with that.
Well, and I, I like what you're, you're mentioning there, Brittany. Maybe we, we look at, you know, as we met as a subcommittee, there were some that were easier to say, yeah, I see how this one fits, that would probably be disposable. And then there was others that do become more subjective. You're going, this conservation easement, how about, how's this going to, you know, fit as a property or, or, you know, you know, how does this really work with the whole subdivision? And like you said, what my objective going, hey, I think that would fit as, as the open space criteria, that feels as, as a fill, and someone else might say, oh, that doesn't add to any fill. And I get that that's subjective, you know, but maybe we come up with a parcel As or those that were low lying fruit and we, we bring those in, and then those who might be Bs that might be a little harder, we have some discussion on a little bit more.
So enlighten me here, you want the work session to refine the, the criteria list, which is never going to be completely objective and was obviously subject to change? And then you're going to pass that and then you're going to vote on properties after that?
Well, we just got the list of the properties, we were going to look at them.
I, I, I want to make sure that resident expectations are set clear because the way I'm seeing this now, this is the end of July thing, it's not a June thing.
Well, I mean, I guess in, in my mind, this is still like a, a next meeting thing. This would be us looking at the list of properties, the ones that the subcommittee has said are, we think, most likely to be sellable and the ones that staff says these would not be sellable for whatever reason. All I'm saying is, let's pass everything, but let's just have a work session next week, next time before the meeting to apply our criteria to the properties and just see how well they work and then.
But that's, that seems like a reasonable approach to me.
Yeah, that's the only thing I'm asking. I don't want staff to do any more work, I don't want, I just want, I want residents to have answers and be able to start working on it. I just would like to have a work session and I think we would get clarity on the criteria during the work session.
And, and tweak it if we need to.
Sure.
Because we can still go ahead and surplus the others. You know, I've always been in favor of surpleasing property we can't maintain. We never talk about the fact that it's hard to maintain, and I think that should be part of the criteria as well. But, you know, I support this, I just think the language could be better in this.
Sure.
I'm fine with that.
So what are we saying? Pass this as is now, tweak it next time? And just to be able to tweak it?
I would table this part and discuss it next week and pass it in two weeks.
So table the whole thing?
No, let's get part of it done. Can't we get part of it done?
Well, there's several agenda items.
Yeah.
Well, we're just talking about this one resolution here, right, for now? So table this?
Table this and then pass the next two.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so all in favor of continuing this until next council meeting?
Don't we have to make a motion?
Right, so you're, that's what you're asking.
Yes.
So the motion should be to continue this till next council meeting?
Two weeks.
Motion to continue until two weeks.
I'll second it.
Motion by Kim, second by Scott, all in favor.
Aye.
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 Mayor, what time would you like that work session to start next time?
If we were going to get, if we're going to be thorough, I would say two hours before the meeting.
Could people do five?
Don't you think that if we, if we all do our research beforehand and add our notes to the Dropbox document, that we can work through it quickly in an hour?
I love you, Brittany.
Do anything in an hour, I know.
Let's do a compromise, an hour and a half.
Hour and a half.
Okay. Okay, just but for the record, I feel confident that we can do things quickly when we want to.
Okay.
Five thirty?
Five thirty.
Okay.
So, did, did we just say an aye vote or how did this?
That's, that's just a, we're just determining a meeting start date.
Okay.
So that item continued. The next item, item seven, still relates to open space. This is the code amendment to the city's municipal code. It does two primary things. One is it repeals the final bit of the petition process. The council previously repealed the neighborhood option trail procedure. There was still remaining the city code, the designation of open space petition removal as sale process, though the council had put a moratorium on that. With this new policy in process that you're going through, it seems appropriate to remove this unnecessary section in the city's code, just to make it clear that petition process no longer works. The second thing it does is it amends Title II, Chapter 44, which is the city's disposal of public property section. There were a number of questions, kind of, as these discussions have happened regarding what is the appropriate process to go through for open space disposals or orphaned property disposals. The city's code as it currently reads, well, to back up, state law says cities have to designate and define what a significant parcel of real estate is, and then you have to go through a notice and disposal process. City law, or state law says it's up to cities to decide what a significant parcel is. City law in this section here said everything was a significant parcel. And then it had a procedures for how the city, city council would then dispose of it, which would require an appraisal, certain notices would go out, very involved process, which seemed unduly burdensome for what are small, significant to some people, but smaller parcels that may not be as significant in terms of, you know, large parks or large, you know, buildable lots or things of that nature. So we, staff is proposing, based on council's previous discussions, that the council adopt this amendment, which would exclude orphaned parcels from the definition of significant parcels of real estate, simplify the notice process and state that the council can by resolution designate certain parcels as orphaned parcels that don't need to go through that more involved process, which is, you just designate by resolution, which you will be doing in, you know, the next couple of weeks or so. So any questions on this code amendment?
Just, just one, since there was an approval of some open space cell about a year and a half ago and it was coming, now it's going to be coming as a referendum or on the ballot in November, how, how does, does anything here affect what's going to be voted on the ballot at all? Is there any cross effects at all?
It's already been put.
No, that, that's all still in place. The referendum is still going forward. That's, that all happened. We're just talking going forward, we're changing the process, so future disposals will happen under this new procedure.
So the, so the old approval has to go on with the old process, is what you're saying?
Yes, I mean, they already went through that whole process.
No, it's being voted on.
Okay, I just want to make sure, okay.
There's nothing left to do on that except the referendum and then see what the results are.
So, oh, I was just going to say, I like this, we've talked about it a lot, I'm in favor and not going to cause problems. This is one of our extra discussion, I'm just, I think, I think it's fantastic.
I'll go ahead and make a motion if we're ready.
Can I, can I make a comment? I know we're in a rush here, but.
Oh, no.
Okay, I, you know, I really appreciate this and I support it. I was just a little curious because on the noise ordinance, we got the whole ordinance and we crossed out lots, sections of it. We're going to eliminate a whole kind of part of this, but there's no reference to it except what you just said and, and the code number. I was just kind of, I'm just being curious why we didn't put in the old ordinance that we're eliminating.
So under the attachment one to the staff exhibit, it's the ordinance that the council will actually adopt.
That's this right here.
Section one references an attachment, which is where we go through and say, here's what the new property dis- Section one references an attachment, which is where we go through and say, here's what the new property disposal process will be. Section two just says that chapter twelve point thirty-two designation of open space property for disposal is hereby repealed in its entirety. If the council would prefer to see the entire code section and then struck out, we can certainly provide it that way. That's.
Well, I'm just curious, because when I was talking to Brittany, she didn't know about that ordinance. I mean, we, I know about it because I helped pass it in, in two thousand twelve, because we were trying to resolve things at that time. I'm just curious.
I think, I think staff's position is we try to keep the staff reports as short as possible. So where we're just removing the.
They were too long, we need to cut out stuff.
Scott did say that. I do remember Scott saying they were too long.
Yeah, that's with all the engineering specifics of every part of the wells. I'm not talking about ordinances that we should know about. Okay, I was just curious.
Well, anybody can look them up, right? Any council member can look them up.
Andy, are you having fun yet? He's super happy to be here.
Happy to be here.
Okay, I'll make a motion. I move the council adopt the ordinance amending section two point four-four disposal of public property and repealing chapter twelve point three-two designation of open space property for disposal.
I'll second that.
Motion by Kim, second by Scott, okay.
I was arguing Kurt.
Yeah, sorry. Not used to having Kurt on my left hand. Uh, Aaron, we're ready for vote? You're, you're ahead of me. And Tim, yours doesn't work still, right? Here's Tim Garn.
His computer's dead.
All right, so let's reveal. Oh, Kim, what's your vote?
Oh, Tim.
Tim?
No, I'm basically Kim.
I did too.
Oh, Tim. Okay, Tim's a yes.
So can I bring a point of order?
Yes.
Not on this, but on the previous, on agenda number six. I mean, there was a move to table it. Did we have a vote?
Yes.
You guys did a voice vote.
I didn't vote. I, because I was confused because, you know, because this screen came up. I didn't think we really, it was just a voice vote?
I said at the time, can you make a motion?
It didn't do an individual, but it was a.
It was, and I said, we're ready for a vote. And then everybody, there were at least three or four yeses.
Before I could get to the, this slide. So I, I assumed council was, it was a unanimous.
Well, I'll vote yes, since I seconded it, but I just thought, I didn't get to cast a vote.
There were, there were three yeses on, on that. There was, I know Kim, Brittany and myself at least said yes. I'm sorry, Scott, I don't know if I.
Well, I know, it just seemed a little ragged.
It was, but that's because they voted out loud instead of waiting for the thing. And I think I said all in favor or something like that. So that was my fault for the raggedness. So Tim, you would have been a yes on that as well? Okay, continuing. All right, so that was unanimous then. So item eight. No, 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 is that it?
Item eight is the final resolution. Kind of ties into the, the policy that you are approving and just are clarifying in the future. This is the small resolution. It just specifies that for two thousand twenty-one, the price of orphaned parcel per square foot is a certain amount. For this year, it's two seventy-four. The council went through that discussion before. This is you just officially stating for this year, this is the price for orphaned property.
I, I wonder, since we continued the last resolution, which had this embedded in it, if we shouldn't just continue this and then have a vote next time after that work session where we can. I'm asking the council.
Does that matter if this one's voted on tonight?
It, it doesn't.
If, if something comes up during the meeting that affects our consideration on, on this price.
Oh, I, okay. What you're saying, if there's some, we say parcels should be differently priced, is what you're saying?
So maybe there'll be some circumstances where maybe this pricing isn't the right pricing. That could come up. And since we continued the, the resolution because we were concerned about refining.
Well, I don't understa, I'm, I'm gonna be sorry, Mayor, cause I, I agree with a lot of what you're saying, but I'm not sure why we just can't vote on this, cause this is what we're gonna sell the property for. There's no doubt that we're gonna be selling some property and.
Correct.
Discontin, we just wanted to clarify the criteria a little bit.
Well, I'll give, I'm gonna give you an example, Scott.
I think we should just go ahead and vote on this so that people know what price they can expect.
Let me, let me give you an example, Scott, of where that, we might wanna price things differently. So let's say there's twenty thousand square feet of property that has been encroached, encroached on by an adjacent property owner, and they have made significant improvements to it. Rock walls, gazebos, et cetera. Do you wanna charge them? Do you wanna let them benefit on an encroachment where they've made permanent changes that maybe they shouldn't have made? Like if it was a conservation easement or some kind of effect to the flow of water? Do you, would, or would you want to charge them more?
Or would you wanna charge them less if they've spent a lot of money on the property?
So I, I.
It seems like we need to have some sort of basis and I, you know.
Anyway, that, that's why I think that kind of a discussion could happen in a work session. So if we're gonna defer something because things could change in a work session, I think this is one where things could flex a little bit in some cases.
So Rob, a question. If we pass, let's, let's assume we continue this item and we pass it on the fifteenth. Can we still, if we pass on the fifteenth, still vote to dispose of property at that same time, at that same night? With the value that we agree on?
Yes, I mean, we, we split them out into three resolutions. Mostly so the council every year has two resolutions that are pretty clear in what they're doing. You have the one that likely won't change from year to year, the just overarching policy. And then you have two others. One is just listed properties and then current use valuation. So the council can consider each of those and make a decision. So we're not affecting the entire policy. That's the only reason why they're all split apart. You're welcome to approve them all at the same time. Designate property a surplus all at the same time, it's not an issue.
But is there a problem if we approve this one tonight? I, I think this is a pretty settled question. They've looked, done a lot of criteria on this.
Uh, legally, no.
You'll never get a perfect price.
The council can approve this resolution if it wants.
What happens if we find, just what the mayor's bringing up, just trying to understand. Let's assume we do see a significant, if we decide, I guess we can say that that's a significant change from what we would classify as surplus property. At any time, we could say, hey, we believe the value's different on this one parcel. Is that correct?
Do you really wanna do that?
I guess you could designate it at the time you designated a particular property as surplus. You could say despite the overarching policy that says this is the price per square foot for all orphaned, this one is going to be valued at a different price is.
I mean, I think it's better to have a set price that goes across, there's not a lot of questions. I just, the mayor is bringing up that maybe there's some parcels we're not aware of that might need to have a different valuation.
I'll just say, this does not, it's not.
Binding?
Binding in the effect of it's guidance. I think the council's going to adhere to whatever they approve. It's not a, like a contract where you're putting it out there and as soon as someone comes in and says, I'm gonna buy it, it's signed. You're going to, you'll, you'll have a final chance to approve it, but.
We're changing it yearly too.
Exactly.
I think the process that the mayor used to come up with this price was super smart and I like it. And I think it's fair. And I think that you're right, that we're gonna have a lot of problem with encroachments, that we're gonna have to figure out what to do with. But I don't wanna think about it right now.
So hold up, Brittany, what are you meaning? Are you meaning to move forward with this price?
I'm gonna pass it.
I think based on what Rob said, we, you could pass this and if we see need for changes, you could, you could tweak it. Same difference as the previous one, which we didn't pass, which we continued. So that's the only reason I brought it up.
But would it be wise to put in an addendum indicating that we reserve the right to modify the pricing structure for unique situations?
You could add that as an amendment to this, to this motion.
It's inherently there, right?
So it's clear that it's.
Certainly could add that kind of condition to it.
Do you think that would open up a bag of pickles?
Or Pandora's box.
Who puts pickles in a bag? That is super weird.
Do you like that?
I don't, it's like, I don't get that actually.
I use it with my kids.
Legally, no. It's just, how much discussion does the council want to have on this? That's, that's the decision.
Yeah.
I just think it's good to have one set price. I just, I don't know. I can understand the arguments there, but I thought we were trying to establish one set price and not several different prices every year. I don't know. But the mayor made a good point in that there may be some encroachment issues where there's some sort of presumptive ownership based upon structures. And I, I don't know, I kind of agree with you that.
So I, I would, then we can deal with those as an exception, even under this one.
Yeah, you could still make exceptions to this.
So what you're saying, saying is the city finds out they own a swing pull on their property, the value's different. I mean.
Sure, I think so. They've made improvements, then they can pay for the effect, that increased value of the improvement.
We're not trying to go, this, this is not trying to get.
We're not trying to, but I'm just, here's, here's a simple story for you. In Cedar Hills, somebody built a pickleball court on public property and wants to claim it is theirs.
Wait, wait, where, is it alongside a trail?
It might be.
Is that the one I pointed out to you, Nathan?
Mr. Mayor?
I think I know where it's at.
We're, I, I'm gonna let you come up if you wanna add. You, you got two minutes, okay? Say your name.
Aaron Welter. And this property, the property discussion here actually affects me personally directly in your, your statement about the encroachment part. So I purchased my house in two thousand nineteen. The previous owners to this house decided to encroach on city property. The only thing that I have added to this was I, not added to, but the only thing I've added to my property, my property, is made it better, made it nicer, put up a fence that ends at my property line. So the, the encroachment issue that I'm gonna have with this, especially if my property is gonna be one of these that's affected by encroachment, I encroached on nothing. Previous owners encroached on something. So if there's gonna be an issue with people encroaching on city property and made city property look nicer, made it better, because I can tell you, I'm not gonna speak for somebody else, I'll speak for my house and my own personal stuff. We did not encroach on anything. It looks nicer than what it did because there's been nothing done. The city's supposed to come out and maintain this, which is what we pay our twenty dollars a month for. It is not maintained at all. Grass is at least this high right now. I have to worry about my ten-year-old son going out there and playing around and there being snakes out there, because this has happened multiple times. Uh, there was one time when the city person tried to come through and mow this down, hit a bunch of rocks, threw a bunch of rocks, broke people's windows, and then decided to just move on and not finish mowing this. And this happened probably about two weeks ago. Um, I have since replaced all the windows in my house. I have put up a fence that ends at my property line. I, again, have not encroached on anything. So if you guys are going to put in this, which I don't have an issue with that, make sure to speak to the homeowners themselves, because the previous owner decided to put a trampoline that crosses on the city property, decided to water the grass that it, that encroaches on city property. We did not do this. Satellite images can actually show all this. So for us to be charged extra for this, it, it wouldn't be right. I don't, I don't think the price of two seventy-five or two seventy-four is, is appropriate either. I think it's a, a touch high for a property that's completely unusable. But that's just my personal opinion. I'm not up there making the decisions you guys are. But I will say on the encroachment issue, take that with a, with, with a light hand, not a heavy hand, because some people like myself got thrown into this. I did not, I did not choose this. I did not go past my property lines. I did not do anything, but yet.
Where do you live, sir?
I live up in Viewpoint. So I've tried to make my yard nicer, my yard better. I did not encroach on anything. So maybe talk with the homeowners and make sure.
Where, where do you live?
In Viewpoint.
Where?
Uh, right at the entrance to the American Ford Canyon, right above.
Which, um, what street do you live on?
I live on Park Circle.
Okay. I live in Viewpoint as well, it's nice to meet you.
Uh, I'm Aaron Welter.
Okay, there we go.
So you're on the property that's adjacent to the hill that goes down to SR ninety-two?
My house is the very first house on the left as you enter in. So it's not on the hill side of the house, it's on the other side of the, on the other side of the street as you go in. So I know my property is one that we've, want, we want to purchase the property behind us, we really do. But we didn't, uh, we, we filed a, an amendment with some other peoples. Our next two neighbors wanted to buy it, uh, their property or the property behind their house, I mean, but.
Is that, is that that Southernmost Street? Is that the one we're talking?
Yes, Southernmost, yeah.
All right. Now, that wasn't, when I was talking, that wasn't what I was referring to in my mind.
No, that, that's okay. But I was just saying, if you guys do, go and talk to them, you talk, talk to the homeowners.
Yes, it's complicated.
It, it is, it's a very complicated issue, so.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Thanks, appreciate it.
I think that brings up a good point. We don't know sometimes an encroachment could have been a person that moved in. We didn't know if there's some criteria that gets on.
Stuff like that would come out, it's complicated.
Yeah, my policy position on this is what a mess. And I'm glad we're trying to address it, cause it needs to be addressed, but I mean, it's just.
Complicated.
So Mayor, if we're ready for a motion, I'd like to make it.
Yes, I am.
I move the council adopt the resolution establishing the value for open orphaned space parcels.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Kurt, second by Kim. So Tim, what's your vote?
Yes.
Yes. That passes unanimously. All right, item nine, discussion of Utah State Auditors.
This is gonna be great. This is gonna be like not controversial. This is just gonna be, I'm excited about this.
It's gonna be short.
So, yeah.
As long as we can all agree that fraud is bad.
Fraud's bad.
Fraud or something?
The videos are a little boring. I will say that, those videos are a little boring. Which section do you choose?
Is this a voice or electronic vote?
No voting required.
This is the discussion item.
So thank you with that introduction, Councilwoman Bills, appreciate that. A brief item here for your discussion and consideration. We were fulfilling a requirement, an annual requirement by the state auditor's office to present this information to our governing board. And this information will mirror what three of you, as members of the Lone Peak Public Safety Board already saw here earlier. So, um, we have a clicker. By way of background, again, this is the, the state auditor's office, a new initiative that started last year. So this is the second year of, of the assessment. The assessment identifies best practices for fraud prevention and is not a replacement of the annual audit that's done by our financial auditors at the end of each year, each fiscal year. What is new, um, here, you see at the, the top, we've noted, the assessment is now being considered by the Utah Local Government's Trust. So as a result of, of instances of fraud across the state, which the trust is on the hook for. If, if there are losses there, they want to emphasize the importance of making sure that i's or dotted t's are crossed. So, um, the requirements, we must complete the assessment, but no measures are specifically required. So we can complete the assessment and say that we didn't do anything and we would still be technically in compliance. That's not the case. We are making every effort to improve. The, the assessment that needs to be presented to the council by the end of the fiscal year. Here's the end of this month. And then we submit the, the completion to the state auditor within six months at the end of the fiscal year, which will be done very soon here for both the district and the city. We're not gonna wait six months to submit that. So the, the structure, there are twenty questions in the assessment. Points are awarded for each criteria that we meet. So the, the higher the points, the lower the risk of, of undetected fraud. The primary focus is basic separation of duties. In fact, more than, a little more than half of the total assessment points possible are dedicated to that, to that end. As we completed the assessment here, we, we scored two hundred and forty-five points, which is up from fifty-five last year. Out of the five categories, five tiers, we're no longer in very high risk. We're now at the high-risk level, uh, as, as defined by the assessment. We're within a, just a couple of, of minor changes and won't be into the moderate range. The changes that we implemented here this, this last year to increase the points, improving separation of duties. So payroll, accounts payable, treasurer and reconciliation duties are all handled by different positions within the city. And that mirrors changes that we made with the district as well. So, um, for this upcoming year, and some best practices that we, we feel are appropriate to pursue, wanna make sure that all council members have had an opportunity to take the really exciting.
As Kurt aptly pointed out.
Yes, training. And that's, that's a requirement. In addition, beyond this assessment, that's, that's required once per term. In addition, beyond this assessment, that's, that's required once per term there on the council. And we can provide, provide a link there for you, just get the certificates to me, once you've completed that. We will identify additional policies to be established. Most of those are in place, in alignment with the assessment, but there are a couple there that could be improved. Implementing an ethical behavior statement for a governing body and staff, and establishing or promoting a fraud hotline. In, in the board meeting with the district, we discussed promoting the State Auditor's fraud hotline, which seems appropriate, and that's something that we'll pursue here right away.
It's a very low-cost item.
Yes, very much so. And there's that, that oversight is already established, that, that purpose is already out there, so. Happy to take any questions or comments that you might have.
So remind you, what risk level are we at now, with our new score?
Right now, we are at high, which is an improvement from very high.
Very high, yeah.
Very nice presentation, completely enjoyed it, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any questions? Seeing none.
So, the goal is to get to what risk? No risk?
Risk cannot be eliminated.
Right.
Right? We mitigate. So the, the breakout, the State Auditor's Office, the highest range, or the highest part of the range, very low risk, would be 355 points or more.
So what's the point level to get to the next?
276, so a couple of the, the areas that we identified for future focus are 20 points apiece. We get two of those, and we'd be at moderate.
So if we all do this training, that's very exciting, is that-
That's 20 points.
That's 20 points, right there.
That's 20 points.
Yep.
And remember-
Would you send me the link again?
You bet, you bet.
And so-
I know, none of it.
We can just progress, we progressed from last year to this year, we'll progress again.
Right, Nathan said I'm fired if y'all don't get that training done, so.
Well, we want to keep you.
Thanks.
We want to keep him, we need to watch that training if we haven't. All right. Mayor and staff communication items. There are the dates, I would add an interesting update, and I don't want to get expectations set.
Oh, shoot, no, don't look at Nathan, he's talking.
I can talk to you individually. Brian Patton, I'm gonna ask him to take a minute and talk about fireworks. I don't know if you're aware, the last time, last Alpine council meeting, they banned fireworks in Alpine this year, because of the drought.
That is correct, Alpine banned fireworks citywide. We're hearing that American Fork, I, I've not confirmed that. So, something to think about, we probably need to get on this as far as what Highland City's going to do, fireworks.
So, yeah, so I just want you to say, your minimum recommendation would be?
Well, looking at the map from last year, we talked about banning every, everything north of SR 92. The other consideration, if American Fork really did ban their fireworks, Alpine banned their fireworks, Highland is gonna be in the middle.
We could become the city of fire.
You could become the city of fire, so if that's what you want-
Fire and social dances.
Dancing and fireworks. So, just something to think about, we probably better, you know, we're a month away-
Okay.
From fireworks season, so.
Brian, thank you, I don't know, I, I know that, hopefully y'all know as a council that you're kinda acting chief there over at the fire department, and we appreciate your service. I think as Benny has said, we're getting good reports, so thank you for your service there, and being willing to step up. Chief Williams has also stepped up to help lead out there at the fire department, but I appreciate your recommendation.
Thank you.
Okay, so, the, on the discussion item, we had talked about, last time when you passed the RAP tax, you authorized the staff to proceed with the RAP tax. We talked about setting up a subcommittee to work on a strategy for communicating what that RAP tax would mean to residents, and what they would get for that. So we're looking for three names to be on a RAP tax subcommittee. We did this when we had the, the road fee, and I believe we did it also when we had the PSD fee. We just met and came up with a strategy for how do we want to communicate this, so that residents know exactly what-
Now, Mayor, as we talk about this RAP tax, no city employee should be dancing in the back. This is not that type of rap.
We're providing Scott way too much ammo.
Don't quit your day job.
Okay, what can I say? I just don't know what to say.
You can do an Irish jig, right?
Banning fireworks, dancing, and then we're gonna raise taxes, and it's election year.
Alcohol and being open on Sunday, also.
Oh, I know.
Welcome to Highland.
So, if, is there anybody that wants to volunteer to be on the RAP tax subcommittee? I'll volunteer, so there's one.
I would love to.
Two.
I'll do it.
Three. Okay, anybody else want to take my place? Okay, all right, then we, we won't do that. Okay, so that's the committee. That's all I had, unless somebody has anything else.
This may be a question more appropriate to ask the Lone Peak Safety Board, but we do have Chief William here. But, I was just kinda curious, do we have any statistics that could maybe come to the council? I'm sure we can find if we look, like, how many, like, road citations you do? And I noticed as the east-west corridors opened up, I haven't seen a vehicle patrolling there at all, and, and I think it's, kinda we're in the learning phase about what the speed limit is. For example, I try to drive the speed limit, most people do, I think, but, you know, we had some teenagers in a pickup truck, that I know were going 50, 55, 60 miles an hour. And the problem is, is if you're going west and hit the brink of that hill, you don't see what's coming up the other side to get to the top, and if you're going 50, or 60, or whatever they were doing. I mean, I almost turned around to follow and report their license plate, but it just seems like, early in the process, it might be nice to have a patrol person there once in a while, and just kinda, kinda help educate people. And it, and it seems like, you know, a lot of the people that use that road are from American Fork and Cedar Hills. It looks like a revenue generator to me.
It's another type of rap tax, right?
Yeah, well, but I, that's not the reason I'm doing it, I just think it's kind of an educational thing for people, because we hope Canal Boulevard, the whole city, is 30 miles per hour, and yet, when we have people that are already driving 50 miles an hour and racing and stuff, I'm a little sensitive, because I live right by it, but I'm concerned. The noise, by the way, has not been bad, I was, I've been pleasantly surprised. You know, I've been running out with my decimeter, but it's not been bad, it's much better than I'd hoped, so. I, what I'm just saying is, have you been patrolling that road at all, it's a beautiful road.
I know officers have been over there, I don't have statistics in front of me, or I don't have stats in front of me that would tell us how many citations have been issued on that road, if any. But that's certainly something.
There's been a wreck on the corner with Alpine Highway already, right?
Yeah, we, I don't know, I don't keep, I don't, I don't hear about all those. If you tell me that there was, and there, then I'm sure there was, so. The, we do have statistics that are available, just by running that information through our report management system, but we will, I will get information out to the officers, and we'll make a larger concerted effort, especially since school's gotten out.
Right.
It becomes a highly, much more highly traveled, and as people become educated and know that it's there, it's become quite a commuter roadway.
So we did post a sign on the west side of Canal Boulevard, to inform, just remind people that the speed limit has changed. I saw that we had our big billboard sign. We also have a sign that just tracks, we have a speed that flashes your speed when you, as you go past, that's also on a trailer, I didn't see that one out. Is that your sign, is that yours, or is that the city's?
We do have one, yes. I'm not sure if that's the one that you saw, was the one that we owned.
It wasn't the one that the police has, it was the one the city has. So, it might be good to put that, especially on the west side.
We don't have another one.
It's just the one they have.
It's just they have.
So, it's just a reminder what the speed limit is, yeah.
Well, because the, especially on the west side, where the speed limit changed, from 35 to 30, that would just be a nice reminder-
Sure.
That the speed has changed.
Can I, can I ask Chief Williams also another question? And I don't know if we're starting to notice some uptick in car burglaries in the area, or is this, I mean, is it just kinda cyclical, what happens this time of year, are we, are you noticing a trend where we're getting a little more?
That's a great question, I've been asked this question numerous times over the last 30 days, and I'll, I'll give you two answers, because it changed over the last week. Typically, we've not seen an uptick- in that type of activity, if you look at our statistics. What you're seeing is more people being, coming more active on social media, and those apps like Ring, and the Wise app, and My Neighborhood app, that are gathering that information and putting it out on social media. More people are using the Ring app, and, and, and apps that record activity outside your home with some type of camera, those things are starting to be posted to social media more often now than they used to be. And so you're seeing more of it from a public perspective than we're seeing from a law enforcement perspective. Now, I will say, in this last week, we did have a rash of burglaries, in a particular part of Highland, where garages were left open, and I talk, and I've spoken to several of you about crimes of opportunity, and if you watch some of these videos, what you're seeing is individuals that are approaching homes or vehicles and garages, if they're open, they enter them, if they pull the car handle and it opens, they enter the vehicle, if it's locked, and if the garage closed, they just pass by. So it's crimes of opportunity. There have been, and this is, again, there's not an uptick in this, but there have been what we would call a burglary or a home invasion, when people are not home, and individuals have come home and caught them in their houses. But that's not been an uptick in that area either, but you're seeing more of this posted to social media than you've ever seen before, so individuals are becoming more aware of it, which is a good thing. It reminds us that we need to keep our things locked up and take those precautionary steps to protect our property and our homes and our, and our lives.
Can I tell a little funny story real quick, I know everybody wants to go?
I don't know, it's past 10 o'clock, I think we're out of time here, so.
This on this very issue, so yesterday, I have a widow that lives next to me, and, and different things, and I saw a guy pull up in a red car, who was walking into her garage, walking into the, her closet, or shed outside and stuff, and I didn't recognize him. And so my wife called over and said, hey, do you know this guy's walking around, he had a cap on and that? Well, it was her youngest son, that I hadn't seen for a long time, and he's a police officer in Murray. So, we were kinda a little bit chagrin.
He should know better, I'm kidding, so.
All right, any, any other comments? Then I would entertain a motion to close, to move to a closed session to discuss pending or reasonably imminent litigation.
Mayor, I move the county, the city council recess and convene a closed session to discuss pending or reasonable litigation.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
A motion by Kurt, second by Scott, this will be a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are moving into closed session, we'll be there for, I don't know, hopefully five minutes, and then we'll come back and we immediately adjourn the meeting, so.